I don't remember how it went for me as an appointment, but.
All right. Good evening, everybody. Good evening. All right, we have a very, very full house, which is awesome to see. So thank you, everybody, for being here. Uh, the time is seven o'clock and we're gonna officially kick this meeting off. So with that, uh, Deb, would you kindly do roll call?
Yes.
Counselor Hancy?
Here.
Counselor Perser?
Here.
Counselor Parrish?
Here.
Counselor Miller?
Great, thank you very much. Uh, with that, I'm gonna ask everybody to stand, uh, for a moment of silence to collect your thoughts, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. See if you're doing the walk.
Do the walk.
All right, uh, we have an agenda set forth, uh, in front of us. Any changes to the agenda?
There are no changes to the agenda, Mr. Mayor.
With that, can I get a motion to adopt?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt the agenda as before us.
Second, first and second, any questions or comments? Hearing none, Deb?
Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Counselor Hancy?
Yes.
Counselor Perser?
Yes.
Counselor Parrish?
Yes.
And Counselor Miller? Motion passes five zero.
Great, thank you very much. Um, well, we've got a couple proclamations and presentations tonight, just a few. Uh, but we have a full room, uh, with the, uh, graduates from what I was, what was I told? This is 2025 is the best class ever. Kind of surpassing 2024, we'll see. Uh, but with that, uh, reckoning.
Six.
Yeah.
And let's not get ahead of ourselves. Uh, I'd like to invite Ciara Amanup to recognize this year's class.
Every year they get a little bit better. They've all been awesome. Um, Mayor members of City Council, Ciara Amon, Communications and Engagement Manager at the City of Fruta. It's an honor to be here tonight to recognize our third class of the Fruta Academy. Um, this year, the academy ran for five weeks instead of four, so it was a little bit longer. But we included more presentations from some of our partners as well. So students heard from city leaders, including the mayor, city manager, and all of our city, um, department directors. And then through the academy, students, um, also heard from our Lower Valley Fire District, Fruta, uh, Chariot, Fruta Area Chamber of Commerce and Yoot Water as well, and then received tours of our wastewater reclamation facility, the Fruta Community Center, um, here at the Civic Center. So they've seen everything that the city has to offer. Um, these students took time out of their busy, very busy lives to spend the last five weeks with us. And we're truly lucky to have them, um, be participating in this program. They're so engaged and awesome. We had 27 students this year, which was our largest class out of the three years that it's been running. Um, so it's just an honor to recognize them tonight. Um, right before the city council meeting, you have the opportunity to meet the graduating class, and I hope you're able to see, again, how passionate they are about the Fruta community and how engaged they were, uh, throughout the whole academy. Um, I also want to give a huge thank you to our staff that helped put the, the academy on. Um, it's a huge lift for the whole team. So I appreciate everyone's involvement in making it special. Uh, Mayor Bremen, you, would you like to come up here and help me pass out certificates to all the graduates? Awesome. And congratulations to the class of 2025. You can, you can hand them out. We have Brad Yenter. We have, yeah, 27 again, so I might, I take a minute. And then if you can stay up here, we're gonna take a group photo. Um, Joanne Seal. Um, Ally Deist, is she?
Yep.
Awesome. All right, Robert C V. Did I say that right? Rob. Rob. Awesome. And Linda C V. Stay up here. You can just sign. Yeah. I know.
It's happened.
Thomas Wells. If you want to take Angie's too. Yeah. Uh, Ellie Schultz. Jeffrey Loudon. All right, Brandy Bance. Lori Schneider. Noel Deirdre. Uh, Judy Allen. All right, Donna Wood. We have Julie Carlson. Uh, Eugene Camden. Did I say that right? Kevin Pellin. Tina Uli. Jessica Hearns.
With grace.
All right, Kitty Lamore. Deborah Moreland.
Deborah here? It's one I don't know.
Noel Camp. Yeah. Cindy Artson. Cindy Artson? No. Uh, Sylvia Reese. In here?
No. One more.
One more, and Jessica Ruffel. I guess one more, I know it. All right. Perfect. Thank you all. Big congratulations again.
Stand on your chair or something. You're fine. I'm up above you.
Doesn't need a riser.
Yeah, the, just.
There you go.
You stand on the dais.
Oh. Guard, somebody's phone. Get the mayor's phone.
That's a good one. I'm gonna give us that.
Yay. Now go be ambassadors.
Okay.
I know. Bless you, my husband.
Has that been around for a long time?
What's that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, they learn it, and they learn it in elementary school. Like, it's like. Tradition.
Can you give people a moment?
I clapped like 200 last night. I was like, I can't clap anymore.
I did my woo when it was from me.
That was my woo. I'm gonna come in again next week.
Maybe really good yell if I really like you. Like Kabody, you get it. You got it for you.
All right. Uh, that was awesome. And thank you to, uh, Ciara, and thank you to the staff. I know that takes a lot to put it together. Um, and it really means a lot. All right, uh, next up, uh, we have a proclamation proclaiming May 5th through the 9th, 2025 as Teacher Appreciation Week in the City of Fruta. And Janine, you're gonna go, uh, you'd like to read this?
I would. Thank you so much. Whereas Mesa County Valley School District 51 employs 2,750 teachers and staff currently serving 19,900 students in 46 schools throughout the Grand Valley. And whereas teachers work hard in schools throughout the nation every day to provide a safe, high-quality and stable learning environment for children. And whereas the education teachers provide has the power to strengthen our economy and our society as a whole by growing students who graduate prepared to become successful members of society and the workplace. And whereas our future is written in schools across our country and teachers should be held in high public esteem, reflecting the value placed on their skills and abilities and the importance of public education. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Fruta City Council proclaims May 5th through the 9th, 2025 as Teacher Appreciation Week throughout this community and calls upon all members of our community to express their appreciation for the educators who engage, equip, and empower our learning community today for a limitless tomorrow.
So, and, uh, to accept this proclamation, uh, District 51 Executive Director Angela and our Principal Newt from the Fruta High School, come on up. Oh, but wait, there's more.
There's a few more. My name's Angela. My name's Angela Christensen, and I'm the Executive Director of the School District 51 Foundation. And on behalf of our entire Board of Directors and all of School District 51, I want to thank you. This is the ninth year in a row the City of Fruta has recognized our teachers with a proclamation, and it is sincerely appreciated. And I will take it upon my responsibility to make sure every staff member receives a copy of this proclamation, um, via email within the next day or two. And I now, um, have asked, uh, Fruta Monument High School Principal Newt Klusmeier to say a couple of words.
Thank you, and I'm sorry. I know two of you were at Senior Awards last night, so you, you've heard from me a lot. But no, thank you so much, Fruta City Council. In D 51, we say, "Strong schools make for a strong community." And in Fruta, we're lucky enough to know that the inverse is also true. We have a really strong community here, and that's what makes our schools so strong. And I, I truly believe that's from the top down. I mean, whether it's showing up to football games and risking life and limb on the sidelines to take pictures, announcing at basketball games, helping out at our chili cook-off for band, or recognizing our military enlistees. We feel the support of our community in our area schools, and for that, we're stronger. So we appreciate you, and thank you for appreciating our teachers.
I don't, I didn't know I was talking. I'm Cam, the principal at Shellity, and we truly appreciate everything that you all do. Thanks.
And, uh, same, uh, my name is Dave Neal, Assistant Principal at Fruta Middle School, uh, live in this community as well, and, uh, I could not, um, repeat, uh, even more, uh, fluently that what Mr. Klusmeier said, so. Yeah, ditto. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. All right.
All right, next proclamation, May 11th through the 17th as National Police Week in the City of Fruta. Take it away.
Oh.
Oh, sorry.
All right, whereas there are more than 800,000 law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of our local law enforcement agencies to include the Mesa County Sheriff's Office, the Grand Junction Police Department, the Palisade Police Department, the Fruta Police Department, Corbin's Marshals Office, DeBex Marshals Office, and the Colorado State Patrol. Approximately 56,000 assaults against law enforcement officers are reported on average each year, resulting in more than 17,000 injuries. Since the first recorded death in 1786, more than 24,000 law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and been killed in the line of duty, including five from local law enforcement agencies. Mesa County Sheriff Deputy Edward Ennis was killed on September 27th, 1906 during inmate jail escape. Colorado State Patrol Sergeant Wesley Rosette was killed in a crash on January 31st, 1951. Fruta Police Department Acting Chief Dan Daly was killed in a motorcycle crash in June 2001. Deputy Derek Gere of the Mesa County Sheriff's Office died after being shot by an armed suspect in February of 2016. And Sergeant Wayne Whaler lost his battle to COVID-19 in December of 2021. And whereas the names of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington, DC. And whereas 145 officers were killed in the line of duty in 2024, one of whom was a fallen Colorado hero, Officer Evan Dunn of the Golden Police Department. His name was added to the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial located in Washington, DC this year. And whereas May 15th is designated as Peace Officers Memorial Day, and the week of May 11th through May 17th is National Police Week. Now, therefore, we, the City Council, or the Fruta City Council, on behalf of Mayor Bremen of the City of Fruta, Colorado, do hereby proclaim May 11th through 17th, 2025 as National Police Week in the City of Fruta, and publicly salute the service of law enforcement officers in our community and in communities across the nation.
Thank you. And Chief Kraus? Coming on up?
All right, Mayor and Council, thank you very much. Dave Kraus, Police Chief here in the City of Fruta. Just wanted to take a moment to thank you for your ongoing, continuing support for the police department and all of our law enforcement, uh, partners here locally. Um, and for recognizing Police Week, and particularly for honoring the, those who, uh, lost their lives in the line of duty. Many of the names you mentioned in that proclamation are, were, uh, close colleagues and friends of many of us who've been in this profession for a number of years, and, uh, so it's very meaningful, uh, to hear you honor them with this proclamation. So thank you for that. Um, I know, uh, here in a couple of weeks, we'll have National Police Week, but, um, we really feel like every week is Police Week here in Fruta. Um, not a day goes by that we don't get a great amount of support and appreciation from the entire community. So we know what an honor it is, uh, to serve such a, a wonderful community, and we're thankful for that every day. And thank you again for the proclamation.
And thank you for everything you and your entire team do. That will never happen again. All right, um, so thank you. Next proclamation is proclaiming May 18th to 24th as National Public Works Week. And Rich, would you kindly read this proclamation?
Sure. Uh, that's next week, is that correct?
Eighteenth to the 24th.
Yeah. Right. Whereas public works professionals focus on infr- infrastructure facilities and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to public health, equality of life, and well-being of the people of the City of Fruta. And whereas these infrastructure facilities and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals, or engineers, managers, and employees at all level of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste, solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in the City of Fruta to gain knowledge of and maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas the year 2025 marks the 65th Annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association, Canadian Public Works Association. Be it now resolved, the City, Fruta City Council does hereby designate the week of May 18th through the 24th, 2025 as National Public Works Week. I urge all citizens to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association and government agencies in recognizing the substantial contributions our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees make to protecting our national health, safety, and advancing the quality of life for all.
Thank you very much. And Ms. Kim, or, um, sorry, our Public Works Director, Kimberly Boland, who loves to speak publicly, is gonna come up and say a few words.
Does it so well.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'd also like to call up John Bolden, our City Engineer, John Carrillo, our Deputy Public Works Director, Steve Martinez with our Engineering Department. Come up and join me.
Come on.
Come on.
Don't argue, boys.
Everybody wore the uniform, which is a plaid shirt tonight. I just want to thank council for your support, bringing awareness, um, to the important work that the men and women do in public works and engineering to make Fruta a safe place to live with good infrastructure, and we couldn't do it without your support, as well as all the technical expertise that these fine gentlemen bring to the job. So thank you again for your support.
Team in plaid. Oh, wait, there's one more. So, uh, our last proclamation is proclaiming the week of May 12th through the 16th, 2025 as Bike Week. Uh, and Ms. Amy, will you kindly read this proclamation?
Kindly read the proclamation.
Thank you.
Whereas Colorado is a premier bicycling state, and the City of Fruta offers some of the best bicycling opportunities in the country. And whereas Mesa County has designated May 12th through the 16th, 2025 as Bike Week to celebrate bicycling for transportation, fun, and health. And whereas bicycling truly adds to Fruta's small-town atmosphere by enjoying the experience of fun and freedom of safely riding a bike to work, school, on errands, for recreation. And where the, whereas the City of Fruta has gained a worldwide reputation as a mecca for outstanding mountain biking, gravel riding, and road riding. And whereas the City of Fruta proudly aspires to hold the title of Trails Capital of the World for its celebrated mountain biking trails on 18 Road, the Coacapelli Area, and the Colorado Riverfront Trail. And whereas bicycling activities and attractions have a positive impact on the City of Fruta's economy and tourism industry, and stimulates economic development by making the area attractive to businesses and citizens who enjoy the outdoors and healthy lifestyles. And yes, creating bicycle-friendly communities has been shown to improve citizens' health, well-being, and quality of life, to boost community spirit, to improve traffic safety, and to reduce pollution and congestion. And whereas the City of Fruta will be promoting the following bicycling activities in May. Friday, May 16th will be Kickoff Bike to Work Day with a free breakfast in Fruta. It's always really yummy. Followed with a bike ride along the wayfinding routes. Breakfast is provided by Einstein Bagels and Coffee from Best Slope from 7:00 AM to 9:00 AM at Fruta Civic Center. Enjoy a group ride after breakfast with Fruta City Staff and the Mayor. May 12th and the 14th will be Mesa County Library Fruta Branch. They'll host a family story time all about bikes. Join us for a fun family story time all about bikes and learn why they are so cool and how to use them safely. That'll be at 10:00 AM at the Fruta Library Branch. May 17th through the 23rd will be Ride Your Bike to Fruta Community Center anytime from open to close to jumpstart your workout and get entered into a drawing to win. It is easy to enter. Simply take a photo of you and your bike at the community center and tag Fruta Parks and Rec on Facebook or Instagram. Please remember to bring a bike lock to keep your bike safe. Now, therefore, we, the Fruta City Council, hereby proclaim the week of May 12th through the 16th, 2025 as Bike Week, and Friday, May 16th, 2025, as Bike to Work Day in the City of Fruta. And we call upon all citizens to participate in bicycling activities to improve health and community well-being.
Thank you very much. And to accept this proclamation is our very own Parks and Recreation Director, Mark Mancuso. Way to make an entrance.
Save the best for last, right? Mr. Mayor, members of council, thanks for having me today. Um, thanks for your continued support of Bike to Work Week and all the crazy stuff that we do in Parks and Rec. So, um, we're excited. We're trying to get more people riding their bikes to the rec center. And so we're hoping for that week long where people are taking pictures of themselves on their bikes, you know, maybe encourage, you know, riding there versus driving their vehicles and saving some parking spots for those that need it. So, um, and I think May 16th, there's a city, uh, managers' meeting or city manager engagement. Um, a bike ride with, uh, Shannon. So if you guys want to. And then next month, we've got, uh, Pedal Kids coming to teach kids how to ditch the training wheels. It's a, a program coming in, not in May, but I wanted to share that as well.
All right, thank you. I think he just upped the ante.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
So, hey, Mark, before you go, so you said there's a ride with Shannon? It, we did, everybody realized that Shannon came in second at Fat Tire, right? So it's gonna be quite a ride.
I've been told race pace only for that ride, so 16th at 12:00 PM.
All right, great, thank you. Uh, next up is public participation in our consent agenda. Um, this section is set aside for the City Council to listen to comments by the public regarding items that do not otherwise appear on the, this agenda. items that do not otherwise appear on the, this agenda or that are on the consent agenda. Consent agenda items are items where all conditions or requirements have been agreed to or met prior to the time they come before the council for final action. These items will be approved by a single motion of the council. As a reminder, we're here to hear from everyone who wishes to speak and we want to ensure that all voices are respected. To maintain a welcoming and productive environment, we ask that there be no clapping, cheering, booing, jeering or signholding. This helps ensure that everyone feels comfortable sharing their thoughts even when opinions differ. Each speaker will have three minutes to speak and I ask that you please introduce yourself with your full name and full address. While we won't be responding tonight, please know that we are definitely listening. Thank you for being here, for engaging in this process and for treating each other with the respect that everybody deserves. So, with that, I'd like to open up the floor to anybody who wishes to come up and speak on anything that's on the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, council members. My name's Jane Soychak. I live at sub Adobe Falls subdivision 1202, Adobe Falls Way. I'm here to read a petition to reduce the speed limit on 18 and a half road leading to Adobe Falls subdivision and Adobe Creek Golf Course. So, the petition reads, "The undersigned residents and concerned individuals respectfully request the reduction of the speed limit on 18 and a half road by Adobe Falls subdivision from 35 to 25 miles per hour. Reasons for this request include, number one, safety for the pedestrians. Many families live in the area. The current speed limit poses a risk to all people walking or riding bikes to back bike path, also driving golf carts to the golf course. Two, the high traffic volume and speeding. Drivers frequently exceed this posted speed limit driving to and from golf course, endangering pedestrians, cyclists and others living in the homes backing up to 18 and a half road. Number three, the past incidents or near misses. On April the 13th, 2025, a speeding truck exited the golf course parking lot, broke through a fence, crossed a golf cart path and crashed into a home into the Adobe Falls subdivision. Four, community well-being. Lowering speed limit will promote a more livable and peaceful environment for all residents, especially those homes that back up to 18 and a half road. We believe a reduction in speed would greatly enhance the safety and quality of life in our neighborhood. And we kindly urge the city to reduce the speed limit to 25, increase signage and enforcement needed there, as well as consider installing speed bumps." So, I do have a petition of over 40 names and I didn't even get to all the houses in the neighborhood. And we do have a PowerPoint I can pass out to you guys.
We can take, yeah, if you've got, do you have copies for everybody?
I do.
And we can do that, but if you could kindly make sure that Deb gets a copy as well.
We gave each of them one already. I gave each one, yeah. And then I've, and that's really all I have to say. I could pass it to you guys now?
That would be great.
Yeah.
Just tell us, that's fine.
Yeah, we can take them.
My name is Steve Soychak. I'm Jane's spouse. I've lived in Fruta. We've lived in Fruta.
If we can get through this and we'll get right to you.
All right, thank you.
Steve? You're up.
Yes.
You can state your full name and address.
Yeah, Steve Soychak, 1202 Adobe Falls Way, Fruta, Colorado. We've only lived in Fruta in that subdivision for about two years, a little over two years. Before that, we lived in Redlands and all three of our daughters attended Fruta Monument High School here. So, they went on to graduate and went to CU Boulder. Anyway, that, that PowerPoint that you're looking at, I helped put together. It shows the petition and it shows possible signage for 18 and a half road, which says slow. It shows a picture of a bicycle, a pet, pedestrian and golf carts. And then we also have pictures and videos showing the damage to a home caused by a speeding vehicle that she mentioned on April 13th that passed. You can see the first picture. It shows it going through the cart path and then into the home where you see the trucks at right now. And then the, the next two pictures are basically, shows the hole in the house of the truck that went through. And I'm, I'm gonna guess it went much higher than 35 mile an hour speed limit to go through that, that distance. And then finally, the last picture is the home boarded up after the accident. But I do want to emphasize, I did give her a flash drive that shows all these pictures as well as the PowerPoint. And it shows a video that I think is very important. One of our neighbors took a video. I would guess that car was going about 80 miles an hour down that road. And it's not uncommon to see people drag racing off that road and drag racing each other too. So, I do appreciate the police recently coming out there and it seemed to be a little more subdued. And I know they passed it on to the, with the traffic, traffic safety committee is, they passed that on to them. So, we want to make sure that this is elevated and, and to prevent accidents. You know, we're very, we're very fortunate that this accident didn't cause death in either the driver or people that were sitting in the home at the time. So, with that, thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Is there anybody else who would like to come up?
Good evening. I'll make it brief. Mayor, city council. I personally have been affected.
Can we get your?
I'm sorry.
Full name and address for the record.
Andrea Ward, 1444 Niblick Way, Fruta, Colorado, Adobe Creek. I'm the one. I'm the homeowner that was affected by the accident on 18 and a half road. When my husband and I moved in seven and a half years ago, there were nine homes in my subdivision. Now, there's 79. This is a residential area, obviously. So, again, I want to ask that we change the speed limit to 25. I'm not sure that would have changed what happened on April the 13th to my home. The golf course has many patrons and they all seem to be in a big hurry. I'm a golfer, so I get it. Everybody's going to have fun, but I sit on my patio a lot and most of the people leaving there in the evening are late for dinner or in trouble with their wives, I'm not sure. But I feel there should be laws in place to prevent the egregious abuses of the speed limit. Just recently, an intoxicated person who was speeding drove off the road through the post that holds the gate in concrete and across the golf course into my home. My resident and I've been devastated by it. So, I appreciate the Fruta police. I appreciate Fruta in general. I have high respect for everybody that works here, but I would ask that something changes these laws and what's happening on 18 and a half road at the Adobe Creek Golf Course. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Thank you. Would anybody else?
Mayor, council members, my name is Patricia Brown. I live at 1224 Adobe Falls Way on the corner. And I just want to say that something does need to be done. Frequently in the summer, my husband and I sit out on our patio, which faces the golf course there and people speed, especially at the end of the day. They're easily going 40, 50, 60 miles an hour down that road. And if I had been sitting out on my porch and somebody came through and I would have been killed or my husband would have been killed. It makes it difficult to think about sitting on your back patio in the evening and enjoying a meal with your family. And I just hope that you will take into consideration lowering the speed limit. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Patricia. Please, sir, come on up. No worries.
I'm Bill Dressel. I live at 1256 Fairway Drive in Adobe Falls. As you just saw, wasn't for this, I couldn't walk. If it wasn't for what's called a recumbent trike, I couldn't get out and get exercise. I have a flasher in the back, wear an orange vest, have a flag. And my route to get up to the, the path is to go on 18 and a half road. And I can't tell you the number of times cars go flying by. It isn't, I don't mean it just because I'm sitting low. They're, they're actually zipping. And it isn't just members of Adobe Falls subdivision that use that road. The subdivisions, especially to the west, people come down there, because I know them. I meet them at the, by the way, thank you for your rec center. It's fantastic. And we work out and socialize there and they come over to the subdivision right around because they think it's a safe place to ride their bike, bring their grandkids, kids, what have you. But once you get on an 18 and a half road, all bets are off. The number of times I'm sitting there in my trike and I look in my mirror and there's nothing there and all of a sudden a little while later, it goes flying by. And I know these are difficult issues. We're not the only place in this wonderful city that's faced with the traffic issue, but it is one that if you could find out an answer, we would really appreciate it. What's been forth, put forth makes sense. I know you're busy, you've got a lot of issues, take care. Thank you for giving us the time to come by and, and share.
Thank you, Bill. Would anybody else like to come up and speak on anything that's on the consent or not on the agenda? All right, seeing none, I'm gonna go ahead and close. I'm sorry.
Is now the best time to talk about the Fruta urban growth boundary or will it be an opportunity to talk?
Now's the time for your three minutes.
All right. All right, good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Paul Schultz. I live at 143 Altamont Court, Fruta. I'm here tonight to express serious concerns about the Fruta urban growth boundary, which directly and negatively impacts private agricultural landowners within the Fruta urban growth boundary who wish to remain in farming. First, the urban growth boundary imposes urban development priorities on agricultural landowners who simply wish to be left alone and farm, despite the fact that opens agricultural spaces in and around Fruta reflect and respect a heritage of our community and what makes Fruta wonderful. The Fruta urban growth boundary makes continued farming increasingly difficult and undermines the city's stated goal of preserving agricultural lands. Second, the absence of a formal intergovernmental agreement with Mesa County creates a troubling lack of transparency and accountability. Agriculture properties in unincorporated Mesa County being subject to city planning decisions without clear jurisdictional authority, representation or procedural safeguards. Third, a majority of the landowners on J and 6 tenths road have signed a petition requesting removal from the urban growth boundary because of these issues. To date, city of Fruta and Fruta council has ignored this petition. That silence is deeply concerning and erodes confidence in fair and responsive governance. Fourth, and most troubling, the city continues to rely on inflated and incorrect road functional classifications within the urban growth boundary. As Mesa County Attorney Todd Starr confirmed publicly at the April 15th Town Hall, these classifications are not accurate. They are exaggerated beyond what the roads actually are. This false information is being used to justify excessive setbacks and unjustified right-of-way taken. Fruta City Council and staff have already used these inflated road classifications to approve two resolutions authorizing eminent domain takings of private property along 19 Road. Additionally, council approved $6 million for the 19 Road expansion, despite the fact that city's own land use code states subdivision improvements shall be constructed at the sole expense of the subdivider. So, I ask how much taxpayer funding has been spent on the 19 Road expansion? An expansion that appears to benefit developers over the broader, broader Fruta community and its taxpayers? And what's to stop the same pattern from being repeated on J Road, J and 2 tenths road and J and 6 tenths road, which also have incorrect functional classifications? I respectfully urge council to, number one, establish a formal intergovernmental agreement with Mesa County to ensure transparency and accountability. Number two, respond to and act upon the J and 6 tenths road petition. Number three, immediately correct all inflated roadway classifications within the urban growth boundary. And number four, uphold the rights of agricultural landowners who wish to remain in farming. Fruta can grow, but it must do so honestly, transparently, transparently and without sacrificing farmland or public trust.
Yeah, so you're up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just for clarification, have we seen that petition?
Not that, not that I'm aware of.
As soon as you act on it, you'll get it.
We're done. Thank you. All right, anybody else wish to take part of public comments on anything that's either on the consent agenda or not on the agenda? All right, hearing none, gonna go ahead and close that. And we're gonna go ahead and move into, I lost my place. Consent agenda, thank you. So, we have a consent agenda set forth before us. Are there any changes to that agenda?
There are no changes to the consent agenda, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, great. As a reminder, council members, we can pull anything off the consent section for fully discussion. All items not removed from the consent section will then be approved. A member of the council may vote no on a specific item, excuse me, without asking that they be removed from the consent section for full discussion. Any item that is removed from the consent agenda will be placed at the end of the consent agenda. So, with that, sorry, I'm a little out of order on that. So, but bringing it back to council on anything with consent agenda.
Do we have any, we've had, within the financials, we've seen that there's been some continued slip in sales tax as compared to budget. Do we have any commentary that can give clarity to what we think is going on?
Through the first two months of the year, we really don't. The decrease is mostly in retail trade and a few other smaller miscellaneous items. So, city sales tax is down overall. It is, it has been largely offset by our county sales tax collections, which I haven't got to speak to the county yet to kind of see what they're seeing. But through the first two months, the bulk of the decreases in our city sales tax has been on the retail trade side. And then it has largely been offset, but we should have March numbers probably up for approval at our next meeting because these ones are just a tad delayed because we didn't have a formal meeting on April 15th. So, now you're seeing them announced. Hopefully that provides some additional clarity, but no real trend or rhyme or reason that we can see so far.
What, what do you mean by the offset with the county?
The county sales taxes are trending higher than what was budgeted and what we received last year. So, even though Fruta-specific sales taxes are down regionally, sales tax collections are up for the county portion only. Yeah, of course.
And I did talk to Kayla over at the Fruta Chamber about it and I did ask if she could talk to the businesses downtown and perhaps provide us some insight.
That'd be great.
On item H, the appointment of Amanda Quigley to the Fruta City Council, there was a note in there that I had asked council to email the top five. I'd like to have that adjusted. It was asked that people bring their top five for the following meeting.
Noted.
Thank you. Anything else? All right, with that.
I'm blanking out. Move to approve the consent agenda items, thank you.
We got you.
All right, we have a first and a second. Any additional comments, questions? All right, Deb?
Counselor Hansi?
Yes.
Counselor Perser?
Yes.
Counselor Parrish?
Yes.
Counselor Miller?
Yes.
And Counselor Williams? Motion passes 5-0.
And thank you. And I'd like to acknowledge Thomas Wells, newest member of the Planning Commission. He's now a regular member, so thank you for volunteering and stepping up and wanting to be part of our community. So, greatly, greatly appreciated. And a recent grad. So, all right, with that, gonna go ahead and move into public hearings and action items. First up, we have a public hearing in ordinance 2025-08. This is the second reading in ordinance vacating a temporary city of Fruta easement located on the portion of Lot 1. located on the portion of Lot One at Santa Ana subdivision. And Henry, I think you're up and presenting.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'm giving you a moment to pull my presentation. Uh, but yes, this is a second reading of an ordinance to process a vacation of a public easement. Uh, the easement was dedicated to the City of Fruta shortly after the Santa Ana subdivision plat was recorded. So the request before you tonight is a request to vacate a temporary City of Fruta easement. Uh, it encumbers the east 12 feet and the south 15 feet of Lot One of the Santa Ana subdivision. Uh, the easement again was granted after the plat was recorded in 2008. Uh, the purpose of the easement, in short, was used by the general public for park and recreation purposes and stormwater detention operation, maintenance, and repair of stormwater detention facilities. Here's a graphic from the easement document that was recorded as an exhibit. That dark area highlighted there is the, the area with the encumbered easement, and it's located on Lot One. You can see Track A adjacent to that, which is dedicated open space and functioning detention pond for the Santa Ana subdivision. So here's a aerial photo with, uh, those yellow lines are from the county's assessor's website. It's not exactly a property line, but it's, it gives us a good idea of the location of different properties. Uh, this graphic here shows the location of the easement. It does not encumber or affect Track A. Um, it is only on Lot One of the Santa Ana subdivision. The reason I bring that up is that the Planning Commission meeting and some concerns from the HOA were about maintenance of the area south of Lot One and utilizing essentially the, the space for the easement as access or maintenance to trim trees or cut grass in Track A. Uh, but again, the, the easement wasn't dedicated or set apart for that reason. It was kind of open space recreation for the general public and then stormwater and detention, maintenance, and facilities. Uh, the criteria set forth in our land use code is, is contained on, in Section 17.09100, which states the city council may approve the vacation of a public easement after a recommendation from the Planning Commission upon finding there is no longer a public interest in retaining said easement, and no utility provider objects to the easement vacation. Uh, during our review of the easement vacation proposal, uh, we reached out to our review agency partners, our utility providers, UTE Water, Excel Energy, Grand Valley Drainage District, and Grand Valley Irrigation Company. Uh, none of those agencies had any issues with the vacation as there's no utility conflicts in this area. We also reviewed this with our Public Works and Parks Departments. Um, there have been, uh, no issues, uh, arise from their perspective. And so that's why staff is presenting this to you with a recommendation to approve the vacation. Uh, but this graphic here shows our utility map. This is based on our GIS website, on our, on our Fruta webpage. This shows irrigation lines, sewer lines, and, uh, um, storm drains or storm lines. Uh, you can see where the easement would be. Uh, there are no apparent conflicts with any public utilities. The only thing that arises is a private irrigation, um, system that provides irrigation water to the Santa Ana subdivision. Their pump is on the other side, so this is really like the last user on the irrigation system. But there's also a cleanout right there as, as it is the end of the irrigation line. So you clean it out and get all the dirt and debris out of the, out of the lines. There's the easement location there as a graphic as well. Um, as I mentioned before, no reviewer or utility agency expressed any concerns over the easement vacation. Uh, legal notice, uh, this was accomplished within the 15-day requirement for our Planning Commission meeting, which is the first public hearing. For an application like this, we, uh, have four ways we do it. Uh, postcards to surrounding property owners, site posting on the property itself. It's a blue sign. We post in the newspaper, and then we have a posting at City Hall as well. Additional legal notice needed to happen. There was, uh, an error in our legal notice that invited the public to the April 15th City Council meeting. Obviously, there was a county commissioner town hall in, in joint with the city council, uh, that night. And so what, what we did when we found this out, uh, this, this happened before we did a first reading of this ordinance. We immediately sent out, uh, legal notice, postcards, and new site posting. And then, uh, when we do a first reading of an ordinance, it initiates the city clerk to issue another, uh, newspaper notice, which notified the public of this meeting, uh, for tonight's public hearing. I believe we also called everyone who signed in on our, um, sign-in sheet from our Planning Commission meeting. Uh, Kelly, our planning specialist, is awesome at reaching out, and so that did happen as well. Some folks from the meeting, uh, that attended the Planning Commission meeting weren't actually notified in the buffer. And so I wanted to make sure that everybody was noticed from our Planning Commission meeting that attended, that they were notified of this meeting tonight. Uh, public comments, as I mentioned, again, there were some currents from the, uh, concerns from the Santa Ana HOA regarding this vacation, uh, mostly due to access to maintain Track A, that bottom portion. Um, uh, and there were, um, review or written public comments that were received, and those are in the packet, uh, that you were able to read. And that was provided to the Planning Commission as well. Uh, the Planning Commission recommended approval by a vote of six to zero. Uh, no additional conditions. Um, but, and again, public comments were received at this meeting, uh, related, from the HOA, related to maintenance of their tract. Uh, this easement was not set aside to allow for maintenance, nor was it, uh, conceived or projected during the, the plat review. So there was, uh, there is a little bit over 20 feet between neighboring property owners from, from Lot One and, uh, the south property owner of Track A. So they, they should be able to get, um, equipment in there to maintain their tract. Staff recommendation, as I mentioned before, staff does recommend approval, uh, to vacate this, uh, public easement, um, set forth because it meets Section 17.09100. And then, uh, suggested motion is contained on Page 87 of the council packet. Um, and with that, Mr. Mayor, that concludes my presentation.
Right. Thank you. Is the applicant here? Uh, and would, would you like to come up and speak?
I am Glenn Howell, 102 Santa Ana Drive. That's the property we're discussing. I thank you for your time, and I'm hoping we can get this vacated. Um, the water impoundment hasn't been used since I've been there for a water impoundment. The inflow is blocked. The outflow is blocked with cement. And it has been used as a water impoundment other than when it was originally set up for that. Uh, there was a playground, a little bit of, uh, playground equipment that was moved in. That was the reason for the other easement. And that's been there since I, been there since 2014. And it was in the place way before that, so. Neither of those easements have been used for anything other than to threaten me with not being able to, uh, put up anything on the outside edge of my property from the HOA. Oh, no, we can't do that. We can't fix that. They come up and mow in your yard, but we can't fix that. You know, the HOA. So I would like to get those removed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, with that, um, I'd like to open this up to public comment. If anybody would like to come up and speak on ordinance 2025-08, now would be the time to do so. All right, seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and close, uh, public comment, um, and bring it back to council. Any questions, comments? Okay. Well.
Mayor, I move that we adopt ordinance 2025-08, an ordinance vacating a temporary City of Fruta easement located on portions of Lot One of the Santa Ana subdivision.
Right. We have a first?
Second.
We have a first and a second. Um, any additional questions or comments at this time? James?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I was kind of still reading back over the HOA's, uh, thing. It would be nice to kind of get a little bit back on. The HOA saying that if it moves forward, they would want it to move to the city to be, to take care of the, um, the maintaining of that, the trees and all that stuff in there. I'm just kind of curious to, um, what our take is on that. Uh, obviously you've read it, Henry. What's your take on the, on the HOA letter?
Uh, the HOA letter, uh, kind of suggests that if we vacate this, that they no longer have the ability to maintain their tract or anything adjacent to that. But what that, what that means to us from a staff level is that you have adjacent trees overhanging, or you have grass that needs maintained from, uh, the HOA tract that provides an open space to the, to the public. Um, we see that as more of like a civil matter. If there was a tree growing on a property line and you've got tree limbs hanging over, that's something that the city doesn't necessarily get involved in. And so we see that as, uh, not really necessary for us to get involved in, uh, with a private property owner and an HOA tract in this case.
Okay. So you're not saying anything to be worried about?
Anything else, James? All right. We have a first and a second. Would you please poll council?
Counselor Perser?
Yes.
Counselor Parrish?
Yes.
Counselor Miller?
Yes.
Counselor Williams? Counselor Hansi?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Very much. Uh, that, next is ordinance 2025-09, second reading. An ordinance amending the official zoning map of the city approved by zoning approximately 14 acres of property located at 1130, oh, and 1130 Eighteen and a Half Road from a planned unit development, PUD zone, to a community residential zone. 1130 and 1138 Eighteen and a Half Road rezoned. Planning and Development Director, not Dan Karas. Henry?
I appreciate that. And that's why I tried to get up here fairly quick so you could see me. We, um, obviously there's been a change in who's presenting on this, so appreciate it, Mr. Mayor, uh, members of council. I'll be giving the staff presentation tonight on this application. This is a second reading of an ordinance to rezone approximately 14 acres from a planning and development zone, or a PUD, uh, to community residential or CR. This, uh, property, um, was originally zoned in, in 2002 and was known as the Bernheide PUD. Um, it set forth some, uh, kind of larger lot standards that were, um, really implemented through a comprehensive plan, many comprehensive plans ago. Um, and in this area, really never, uh, saw any of that potential growth or lack thereof towards this area. Uh, since, uh, 2000, uh, well, since Brandon Estates, probably 2006 timeframe, we have then started to see an uptick in growth in this area. Um, as growth kind of moved north, uh, and the construction of the Monument Ridge Elementary School, that's when, uh, we really saw as a community that, um, the area in particular for the Bernheide PUD and, and some adjacent properties around it weren't really fitting that mold of past comprehensive plans. And so every 10 years, cities and municipalities typically update their comprehensive plans to kind of see how the community is growing, where it's growing, and how the community wants to see itself grow, uh, in the next 10 years from the time of adoption. And so, uh, the reason I say that is because this area has seen some change. And, um, having more larger lots subdivision as a customized plan unit development zone, uh, is the reason that we're talking about this area now and that we've talked about it before. Uh, the property here is, is shown with that star. Uh, the brown is planning and development. Those are all customized zone districts within the, the City of Fruta that, um, essentially have a, a benefit to the city under our current standards for planning and developments. And they really get to write their own zoning code. Uh, in particular was the Fruta Muse. This was a, kind of an amendment of the, uh, Bernheide PUD that really talked about more of the density and dimensional standards that continue to meet the City of Fruta's, uh, urban growth boundary and, uh, Fruta Comprehensive Plan for Growth in specific areas of the city, this one in particular. Uh, but you can see its location. It's, it's south of the Monument Ridge Elementary School, uh, and south of Fruta Muse Affordable Housing and north of the Brandon Estates subdivision along, uh, Eighteen and a Half Road or Fremont Street. Here's an aerial photograph to maybe, uh, give those folks in the audience maybe a better representation of the location. Highlighted in yellow are those two addresses that were mentioned in the introduction, 1130 and 1138 Eighteen and a Half Road. Uh, the 14 acres is, is the area is highlighted in yellow there. So for a land use, uh, in our land use code, for an amendment to the official zoning map, which we're contemplating tonight, this is contained in Section 17.09.070, uh, which calls out, uh, procedures and applicability for, uh, amendments to, um, our zoning maps. And, uh, in short, uh, a rezone should be, um, uh, consistent with our comprehensive plan, and it needs to go through a public hearing process to the Planning Commission and a final decision upon City Council. And the approval criteria, uh, that we need to contemplate, um, there are a couple. Uh, the proposed amendment is compatible with surrounding land uses pursuant to Section 17.05080C uh, and is consistent with the city's goals, policies, and master plan. This is, uh, important because you have to meet this step uh, in order to move on essentially to the other, uh, criteria that need to be contemplated of consideration. Uh, but we feel like this, uh, this criteria has been met for a, a number of reasons. Consistency with our comprehensive plan, this area is supported to be community residential, um, anywhere north of, of K Road and essentially west of Nineteen Road within our urban growth boundary. It's skewed. Um, it's not a straight line, but, um, you're all familiar with our urban growth boundary and, um, our comprehensive plan. So this particular property falls into that area, and so that's supported, uh, to, uh, accommodate a recommended approval, uh, of that. And then, um, compatibility, having a, a compatible land use with surrounding land uses. The reason this is in our code is if they were asking for an industrial land use or a general commercial land use, or zoning, uh, for that matter, uh, that would be inconsistent with our compatibility criteria that makes sure that one use can coexist with another, uh, land use and would be in, out of compliance with, um, our comprehensive plan. And so when they're proposing a community residential zone in this area, we think about existing land uses that are currently there, uh, which is why we've provided a breakdown of kind of the density, what you would, what the housing patterns are in the area, um, versus what they could see, um, as a density of, of four to eight dwelling units per acre for a 14-acre parcel, uh, that's obviously undeveloped and it contains, uh, one house. And so, uh, we feel like, you know, it's, it's their case for an amendment to our zoning map is consistent with this criteria, number one. Here is our, uh, here's our comprehensive plan. And in the dash line there, you can see the urban growth boundary, uh, along Nineteen Road. And then highlighted, uh, south of that green parcel, which is, um, community or CSR, Community Services and Recreation, which all of our schools are located on and a number of our parks are, is the area just south of that. And so you can see it's consistent with the, the feature land use map and our, our, which is our main component of our comprehensive plan for land use, um, and in those different aspects. A land use and density table, uh, land uses that are supported in a community residential zone are a, a number, a mix of different dwelling unit types, uh, single-family attached, single-family detached, duplexes, and multifamily dwelling units in addition to accessory dwelling units. Manufactured homes or housing park or, uh, mobile homes are required to get a conditional use permit if they're proposed. A conditional use permit through the public hearing process, decisions by the Planning Commission, through a public hearing and a neighborhood meeting. And then the graphic on the right, you can see the dwelling units per acre. Uh, the dwelling units that, that could happen, that's gross, uh, dwelling units per acre. So, um, our code would essentially allow through our density bonus criteria, eight dwelling units per acre over 14 acres, which would give you roughly 112. That's a little misleading when you factor. misleading when you factor in detention ponds, open space, um, stormwater management areas, roads and trails uh, to get a better idea of that, plus lot size uh, requirements, meetings, setbacks. And so uh, the purpose of providing some uh, some statements in our staff report with regard to kind of net density was to show a housing pattern and what you could, what, what it is and what it actually looks like or feels like. And so uh, the Holly Park Mobile Home Subdivision contains a density that's pretty high. Those are pretty compact. That's something that you most likely won't see here, given the, the uh, history of our code and our comprehensive plan for supporting more open space, state regulations required for detention facilities and stormwater management. So a lot more area in neighborhoods now than there were before for uh, infrastructure needs. And so what we'll probably see, um, but not going to marry it to the zoning uh, ordinance is somewhere between the four to six dwelling units per acre in order to make sense with setbacks um, and infrastructure standards. But with a subdivision application and neighborhood meetings required uh, to be held to propose this to the public, all those people that receive legal notice postcards tonight would essentially receive a, a legal notice or a neighborhood meeting notice to attend a subdivision application if a project on this site were to move forward in the future. Uh, number two of the code criteria, the land to be rezoned was previously zoned in air or the existing zoning is inconsistent with the city's goals, policies, and master plan. Uh, again, as I touched on before, the, the current zoning that allows for uh, one acre to half acre parcels on fourteen acres and already developed parcels to the north of this just seems very inconsistent with why the Bernheide P U D was originally uh, done and never built out. Um, and then inconsistent with our city's goals with regards to our comprehensive plan that supports a community residential zone with four to eight dwelling units per acre uh, proposed. Uh, number three, the area for which the amendment is requested has changed substantially uh, such that the proposed zoning better meets the needs of the community. This uh, is also true uh, for staff's review is the area has changed. The school was constructed. We have multiple subdivisions that went in before the school, Brandon Estates, Oak Creek, Monument Glen, and obviously the Fruta Muse um, obviously changed the character uh, recently. And so this area has seen some substantial change in, in um, its land use and zoning pattern in addition to its housing pattern. So we feel like it meets this criteria as well. So that's uh, three criteria that have been met, only two really need to be met. Here's a graphic that we uh, blew the dust off of in our uh, archives. Uh, this was the, this was the site plan for the Bernheide P U D. The school and the Fruta Muse are, are tucked to the north where there was going to be a cul-de-sac. And then there was some uh, shared driveways off eighteen and a half road. But the remainder of the parcel um, was going to remain as kind of some open space or ag use. And then some parcels uh, were, were carved off in a regional detention pond to the south and southeast of this too. And then the land use code criteria, number four for this is the amendment is incidental to a comprehensive revision of the city's official zoning map. Uh, it does not meet this criteria, nor does it have to because we didn't do a complete zoning amendment to our official zoning map for everybody in the city. It's just site specific. Then the zoning amendments uh, incidental to an annexation, uh, that's uh, not, that's not applicable in this case as this is already in the city limits. Uh, public comments have been received. Uh, additional public comments were received after the Planning Commission meeting, uh, and those were included in the City Council packet um, uh, before you tonight. Public comments were received at the Planning Commission meeting on March eleventh. Uh, primary concerns from neighboring property owners were traffic concerns with future development, uh, something that uh, we can't necessarily accommodate for right now. This is simply a zoning uh, ordinance change. Uh, but the Planning Commission deliberated and recommended approval to the City Council by a vote of five to zero at their March eleventh public hearing. Uh, legal notice, the, again, there's four uh, ways that we try to reach uh, to the public to inform them of a land use application. Uh, a site posting, we did two, there was two adjacent uh, streets. And then a legal notice posting, uh, we went out a little further just to inform neighbors that uh, we feel like would be uh, somewhat impacted and want to know about uh, an application like this. Um, those include all of Oak Creek, a half of Monument Glen, you can see there in the upper area on the right picture, the, the left, and um, most of Brandon Estates subdivision. Um, again, as I mentioned in the previous ordinance, there was some legal notice uh, date error on staff's level, but once we found out and before the first reading, uh, we um, initiated, we redid the legal notice to inform the public and we, we made contact with those that signed in on their uh, sign in sheet at the Planning Commission meeting that weren't um, uh, receiver of the legal notice postcard. We also redid uh, the legal notice postings on the property, given the fact that there's a school there that sees a lot of traffic. Um, and you know, felt like that was a good way to reach out. In addition to that, the first reading uh, invited the public and um, requires the city clerk to publish a notice in the local newspaper uh, for the first reading, and that was done for, for presenting the May sixth uh, or tonight's public hearing date. Then staff's recommendation uh, is to uh, recommend approval of the proposed rezone in accordance with section seventeen point zero nine point zero seven zero B uh, is consistent with the city of Fruta's comprehensive plan. Uh, and staff does again recommend that the proposed zoning application uh, be rezoned from planning at development to community residential. And then contained on page one twenty seven of the City Council Packet uh, contains uh, staff's recommendation, but in short, uh, we recommend that motion be made to approve or adopt this ordinance tonight. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Henry. Uh, with that, uh, the applicant, uh, would the applicant like to come up and uh, present?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members and staff for a great, again, um, I am Kim Cofflin Pardo, and I reside at four eight eight four Briar Ridge Court in Boulder, Colorado. And I am with IndyBuild, the developer of the Fruta Muse, and I am uh, joined by Paul Glasgow, um, Gary Dominguez, and Emily Powell uh, with Housing Resources of Western Colorado. And we're here to just answer questions. We didn't do a presentation.
Okay, thank you. With that, uh, we'd like to open this up to public comment. Uh, once again, we ask uh, we, if you choose to speak, limit uh, your comments to three minutes, and please state your full name and address. Is there anybody that would like to come up on uh, ordinance twenty twenty five dash oh nine? Great.
My name is Bill Verden. We live right there at uh, five twelve Fremont, which is connected where the, on the east. Southeast corner of that partial. Uh, I have no, I have, I can't say nothing about the, the zoning because it's already going to be done. All I ask is that the zoning be done with respect to the houses that are there. A lot of the people we've talked to in Brandon State don't want to see the, the stuff that they put up next to the school. I don't want to see that stuff right behind my house. I'd like to see uh, regular housing, residential. I have no qualms with it if they want to develop that way. And I'm not sure what your comprehensive plan is because I don't, couldn't hear it back there or understand it. So uh, speakers only work up here. Uh, so I would just like you to think about what you're doing. There is other people involved here other than what you're, what you've been listening to. And we bought this from Omar Bernheide clear back in two thousand and four. And uh, it was at his point at that time was two to two and a half acre ranchettes, which we accepted. Uh, we came off of seventeen road to a, a lesser acreage uh, just for that purpose. And now all of a sudden it's changing. We don't, we can't change that. I understand that. And I just want you guys to think about, there are other people that live there besides that open ground. So at least when you do this, try to get it developed so it suits the, the other people that, that have already invested into the area, which you, you need to think about. It's not all about putting up the, the apartments or the affordable housing and all of that. There's more to it than that. So I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Me again, sorry. Andrea Ward, one four four Niblick Way, uh, Fruta. I have great respect for um, the city of Fruta and the Planning Commission. I met Dan Karas years ago. My husband, Bob Ward, has had a couple of conversations with him along the way. I believe in development, but I am saddened by what Fruta is doing, developing all the ag land, you know, taking all these parcels and turning him, them into smaller residential, build, 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 build. I'm not sure if our infa- infrastructure can handle this. Um, I lived in Moab, Utah for nine years, and I watched what happened there. And when I came to my first city council meeting eight and a half years ago, um, the city council said, we want to know how to develop this area without being Moab, Utah. And I raised my hand and so did my husband and gave our input. And we swore we weren't going to do it, but this is pretty scary to me. And that's all I have to say. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Thank you. Would anybody else like to come up and speak?
Council members and Mr. Mayor, I think there's a congratulations in order for Mr. Karas. My name is Kelly Knowles. My husband and I live at fourteen twenty Castle Court. And uh, we did provide comments, written comments to the council. I just am here mainly to make sure that all of the pages are now in your packet and you have been able to take a look at things. And we have really nothing else to say. I hope all goes well here tonight. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much.
Council members, my name is Charles Bernhardy. I live on fourteen sixty five sixteen road. Um, one of the reasons I live out on sixteen road now is because of the continued growth of Fruta, which really is in my, and my idea has been pretty positive. But uh, that farm there I grew up on, I actually went to grade school in this classroom. And a lot of things have changed in Fruta over that many years. And, and you know, you, you saw that old plat mat up there that my dad made. And, and I think that when we first did that, he wanted to be able to develop top end of that property, to be able to do some other things, to buy more open space somewhere else and continue to farm. He wasn't able to do that because continued growth and cost of land and things like that around Fruta kind of prohibited that. And it's just like Brandon Estates to the south of that piece of property at that point in time. And even when they put the trailer park across the road, you know, he didn't have a lot of say over that either, but it continued to happen. Now that property is totally surrounded by subdivisions. And my dad was a teacher for thirty years. And he was very excited about that school being put on the uh, northwest part of that property. And then um, since then, he, he met with Kim and they've talked a lot about putting housing in those areas that teachers can afford, uh, lower income people can afford that move to town like Fruta, policemen, firemen, you know, nurses. And how do they afford houses in the, in the town of Fruta? And I think the uh, development that uh, she's put up there and the other part of the property has at least addressed those issues. And uh, I think my dad would be, would be proud of what it looks like. So, thank you, council. Thank you for considering this.
Thank you, Charles. Is there anybody else that would like to come up and speak on this ordinance? All right, seeing none, we go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to council. These are quiet tonight. Any questions on the, specifically on the rezoning?
I, I mean, I, I guess that I, I'll go ahead and open up something on it. Can, can we turn these down a little bit? They're like, everything's feeding back, it seems like all night long. Um, have we noticed that since the, the muse and the school and everything over there? Because it seems like a biggest concern, one of the biggest concerns is traffic. Are, are we seeing anything that can help us get some information on how the traffic has infected, uh, affected that area, either negatively or positively? But if we could get any type of an information on what that's, what the change has done, that, that would be helpful. If we have any feedback, uh, I mean, I, and I don't know what that would entail, whether it's traffic tickets or accident, just anything. If there's anything that we could sink our teeth into a little bit to address the traffic issue that, that, because that seems to be a major concern. Does anybody have anything on that?
I, I don't have any answers about like, the current status of what those traffic impacts might look like. I think something to look forward to is uh, if this property were to develop, the city of Fruta is going to require a traffic impact study or a traffic analysis. That will show us what impacts are being generated with what's going on there now. And they'll also take into consideration the impacts to the intersections nearby, not just highlighted in that specific area. Um, sure. That will be, that will be reviewed through staff with a preliminary plan application if it gets to that point um, in the future. So we'll have a better idea on that.
So that, that should at least if we did, does move forward alleviate some of the worry that there will be a traffic study before there's actually any building that happens there so that we will be able to uh, have that information to see what that effect looks like, correct? Whatever the proposed building is going to be.
Correct.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, James.
Uh, I really, first, I'm glad you asked that question. Um, and I know that Henry had said that the, that piece doesn't affect the zoning, but that, but it will be something that definitely will be addressed. And to clarify that with your question is super important. So thank you and thank you for everyone expressing um, concerns um, in that regard. I, I do want to say that I found um, Charles' letter, as well as him speaking here in person tonight compelling, um, especially speaking to people's concerns about agricultural land and things like that. And what it speaks to is that nothing happens here development wise without the private property owner moving towards that on their own and that he is in favor of it. I think, you know, obviously he is because that's how any of this process begins, is through a private property owner. So I appreciated those comments.
Thank you. Aaron?
Um, handful of questions. So tonight, we're just talking about rezone. We're not talking about what will be built, if anything. You know, that's, that's a different discussion, is that correct?
Correct.
Um, just want to um, also add like, you know, I think there's, there's always concern in our community about ag land being developed. And first and foremost, people have property rights and we have to respect those. Um, that's not in our purview. We have to follow the laws with it. And so we do not force anyone to develop land. We do not force anybody to do anything with their property unless uh, what's stated in the law. So um, you know, whatever falls in our purview, that's what we, we uh, cover. Um, so if somebody wants to keep farming forever, they can keep farming. They want to sell it to another farmer, great. If they want to sell it to a developer, great. There's, everybody has property rights and it follows the laws in their own what, way. And we do not force anyone to, to do that. Um, I appreciate folks' concerns when it comes to how this property gets developed and, and you know, our, tonight, we're talking about rezoned, um, how things get developed on that property with whatever the uh, property uh, owner does. Um, that's, that's a different uh, set of discussions. So um, where it's uh, well received and with the concerns, um, we have our criteria tonight. And um, let's see. I guess. I guess where, we received a grant, we were awarded a grant, a 123 grant, correct?
That's correct.
And what was that grant awarded for?
It was for land banking, for affordable housing purposes. Are you talking about the dollar amount?
Both. Yeah, what's the dollar amount?
It was 1.5 million.
And?
Up to 1.5.
And so, we're under, the city of Fruta is under a contract, are we not, to purchase property for the use of these funds?
That is correct.
And what's that property?
And I'm sorry to interrupt, Councilor Hansi, Mary Elizabeth Geiger, City Attorney. This is a hearing on the rezone, so we need to keep questions focused on the application that is in front of you for the rezone, and limit it to that, because it is a quasi-judicial hearing.
But, you know, I can appreciate that, but I have concerns with, you know, that contract that we have to spend those 123 grants on that we anticipate is for this property, is it not?
It is.
It is, but again, I would just caution you, Councilor Hansi, that whether or not that contract is in place or closes, or those funds, again, that's outside of whether or not this application meets the criteria to be rezoned. So it's only looking at what's in the code for a rezone and whether that criteria has been met.
And I very much appreciate that. But I guess it's just, as we're under contract for this property, why, my question is getting to like, why, before I ask this officially, but where I'm getting at is, why, if we're under contract to purchase this property, for whatever reason, which we've discussed in other meetings, why is this property going through a rezone when our intent is to buy the property for the use of our community? That's my question. Are you saying that I can't ask that?
That you have, that's, I guess...
I was told I couldn't ask it in any other meeting but this meeting. Like, my questions regarding this property, I had to ask in this meeting, and so now I'm being told I can't.
Well, are you asking about process, or whether or not the city's going to purchase the property? I mean, that's under contract, but that doesn't, you know, it's not closed yet. So the city is not the owner of this parcel.
No, but we're under contract to be the owner, and in good faith, to work with the current property owner. But so why, why is this, it seems like we're out of order, that if we're under the contract to buy the property, why are we not rezoning it? Why is the current property owner rezoning it when the intent is for us to buy it and to look at this property in various uses for the benefit of our community?
I mean, again, I don't want to really, like, stray into, you know, what the Prop 123 money is going to be used for, and whether or not, you know, that includes this property. But the rezone, the city has agreements, you know, with the owner of, well, I should say with IndyBuild, with regard to the development of the property. The city itself is not going to be, like, the developer, if that makes sense. And again, I don't really want to go too far in the weeds on that. But having it rezoned now does not, you know, in any way affect what could happen later, because if it's needed to be rezoned or turned into a PUD at some other point, that may happen, but right now, we can't stop an owner of the property from applying for a rezone, which is what has happened, or whoever it's assigned as representative of that.
So the timing of this is irrelevant, what you're saying to the six points.
Well, we can't, you know, we don't do land use based upon contracts that have not closed. We're not, the city is not the owner here. So if the property owner files an application for a rezone, the city needs to consider that application and whether or not it meets the requirements of the code.
Well, then off...
And those requirements were met, correct?
Well, I'll just end with this. I do see that the requirements to convert this from a PUD to a CR is very black and white, and we meet that requirement. I do feel that there's bad faith in the process with what's going on. There's more things going on than just a rezone, and so that's very disheartening to see. But we do, I do see that we do meet the CR requirements, but other than that, it's bad faith.
Councilor Hansi, I just want to clarify that, you know, there will be future land use applications for development. Again, this is just a rezone, so this, there's not going to, there's not any secret...
I fully understand.
Or bad faith, because development applications will have to be considered through the public process and quasi-judicial hearings as well.
I still stand by, I have bad faith. That's all I have, Mayor.
Rich?
I just think what we have in front of us is pretty black and white. The requirements for the request to rezone this have been met. I'd say we go ahead very simply and adopt this ordinance.
I'd like to hear from Councilmember Amy.
I agree that the criteria have been met, and we'll see what comes next.
Okay. With that, would anybody care to make a motion?
Yep. I move to adopt ordinance 2025-09, amending the official zoning map of the city of Fruta by zoning approximately 14 acres of property located at 1130 and 1120 18 and 1/2 Road from a planned unit development zone to a community residential zone.
Second. We have a first and a second. Any additional questions or comments before we call? All right, seeing none, Deb?
Councilor Parrish?
Yes.
Councilor Miller?
Yes.
Councilor Williams?
No.
Councilor Hansi?
Yes.
Councilor Perser?
Yes.
Motion passes four to one.
Thank you very much. All right, with that, we're going to go ahead and move on to our administrative agenda. And it's a presentation, Community Development Update and Report. And Henry, are you just doing this one?
Wait, they haven't started.
All right. So the Assistant City Manager, Dan Karas, and City Engineer, John Bolton.
That's the first time we've got to call him this new title.
Yes.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Mr. Karas.
But very much appreciated. I thought it was a little bit ironic that my first presentation as Assistant City Manager will be more planning stuff.
You'll never get out of it completely.
Again, Mayor, members of council, thank you so much for having me and John to give this presentation. You know, this stemmed from a request from the mayor to kind of more specifically and in a detailed fashion, go over kind of like how the city uses their urban development boundary, how does it make decisions on roadways? Like, how, like, kind of what's the chicken and egg of building roads relative to having growth happen on the edge or interior to our core? And so, we put this presentation together to hopefully facilitate some good conversation about how the city interacts with the urban development boundary and its other approved plans. But before we get started on that, I just wanted to kind of go over some of the existing or current development projects that we have within the city, and then talk a little bit about...
Dan, sorry, can I interrupt? Can we shut that door? That's always distracting. Thank you.
And then talk a little bit about kind of how the, you know, the kind of overall growth in Fruta relates to these projects, the number and volume of lots, and talk through essentially like, what is the natural absorption of those relative to how many neighborhoods? And go into the urban growth boundary discussion. So I just wanted to put up, I don't know if this is the worst kept secret, best kept secret in Fruta, but I know that I hear a lot, whether it's at the counter, whether it's on the phone, wow, there's a lot of subdivisions that are being approved. And I understand that, like, you know, it's been a volume-based thing in Fruta for multiple decades, you know, where there's been a lot of growth, not a lot of growth. But one of the things I wanted to make mention of is that this represents most of the neighborhoods that have gone through some form of the entitlement process. That could be zoning, that could be subdivision. But what I think needs to be mentioned here is that these properties don't all develop all at once. And so, this list makes up certainly hundreds of what we call, kind of in the business, is paper lots. And they're not finished lots, like we see as filings commence with Copper Creek and with Iron Wheel or Gear Estates or West Canyon. They're most undoubtedly always busted up into filings. Many of these have five, six, seven, eight filings, and they get built out over a number of years. And when we were crunching the numbers relative to what DOLA suggests, says like our annual, you know, kind of average household or person per household to the actual number of buildings that are being constructed, we are in that 250 to 300 people a year, which really hovers right around 2%, which most communities would strive for. So, sure, there's a lot of hearings, there's a lot of buzz, there's a lot of talk about the projects, the size, the whole sort of, as it relates to growth. But I just want you to keep in mind that, you know, we're talking, we're still talking about 100 homes a year. You know, we're not talking about 250 or 300, like we experienced in that kind of '04 to '08 timeline. So I just wanted to make sure that that was mentioned.
Question for you, Dan. So when you talk about 2%, you're saying most communities would appreciate 2% as in only growing 2%? Or is it wish they had 2% of growth? Like, are we saying that, like, it's nice that it's that low, or they want it higher?
So the, I think that more often than not, on like the sort of land use side, we would like to see a number right in that range, because that allows us to keep pace with infrastructure. There's always a lot of talk about, you know, you know, do you build the facilities first? Or do you build, you know, after everybody's already there? And we've kind of seen that with Pine Street, you know, we tried to build that road when all the growth around it had already existed. And so, I would say that it helps us catch up, and then it helps us keep up. And then also, the development impact fees are a big portion of that too, because as those dollars come in, if they're elevated, we obviously can, you know, spend those dollars on capacity-related improvements or other infrastructure-related improvements as it relates to sewer.
So you're saying 2% is a well-managed rate of growth as we deal with, you're saying infrastructure such as like development, like on 19 Road, we are building that right now, and that will be reimbursed back to the city through impact fees, right?
Yeah. And it also has two recapture agreements, sanitary sewer of $2,000 per unit, and then I want to say, and the under $500 a unit for the extension that we put.
So development's paying for a lot, a lot or all of that?
Enterprises and the general fund, yeah.
Great.
As well as, you know, construction space and just... Yeah. So what is an urban growth boundary? In my professional opinion, the best way that you could describe this is, this is a message, you know, by way of map, to your community of what your municipal boundary could look like. Some communities do 10 years to look ahead, some communities do 50 years as a look ahead. And so, this is merely a tool that identifies a jurisdictional boundary that we have signaled that we can serve with urban-level infrastructure, and that we have the ability by way of contiguity and future land use to support that growth as it persists out to any of those edges. You'll see all around the community, in fact, like, let me just pull it up, but you'll see kind of what I would consider to be a relatively contiguous and compact community. I mean, if you look, just for example, at Grand Junction's, it's pretty spread out, you know? And there's been growth, you know, all throughout the community, but they still have planned areas, just like we do. And that is that black dash line, which essentially represents right under about 2,000 acres. Back in 2008, when we updated the plan last, it actually was larger. It was about 2,500 acres. So, again, worst kept secret, best kept secret. You know, we actually contracted the urban development boundary, and then eliminated the feathered edge. So like, the densities essentially go down as you are out on the edge. And for the purpose that a lot of times we hear as our approval criteria, which is to preserve open space and agriculture. And so, you know, that is a technique that was quite different than the previous plan, where you had like the one-acre lots or the half-acre lots as you got closer to the edge of the community. But that's real cumbersome on our infrastructure, because essentially, we sized them for the neighborhoods that are built at that point in time. And then eventually, you leapfrog that density and continue to sprawl. And so, we wanted to have a compactor edge, if that's even a word, and have a predictable outcome for the areas that we could reasonably serve with urban-level infrastructure.
Dan, would you prefer questions as you go, or do you want to?
Yeah, as you go, like, I'm indifferent to that. You can ask me as we go through the presentation.
So, as it relates to urban growth boundaries and our interactions with the county, can you refresh why, you know, the county said they don't want them, those are not normal, and why those don't exist?
Why the...
The IGAs?
So, the reason why the IGAs don't exist is that, like, at least with Mesa County and Frutas, that we don't have any shared facilities outside of, they provide the stormwater management for us. And there is, their Mesa County master plan, it has a future land use designated that is identical to our urban development boundary called the Fruta 20110. It's essentially like our sewer boundary. And so, they've recognized that through their master plan as that is an area that is eventually going to urbanize, or that Fruta is planning on urbanizing at some point. And so, they restrict those units to one unit per 10 acres. And then any development applications that would exceed that minimum density, they refer to the city of Fruta. And so, I think that part of the reason why we don't have any IGAs relative to the urban development boundary is that we have a recognition through our long-range planning efforts that we're going to be a mutual, like, cooperating partner throughout the course of whatever jurisdiction is going through a development application.
Yeah, I just remember them saying that they didn't, they wouldn't even consider one. And just thank you for the clarification.
I think that the statement, if I recall correctly, is they feel like that would be, reduce the level of restrictiveness that could take place, rather than, which I think is kind of what the claim was, is that you don't have these, so there's no predictability. And I think that the answer that, and new spaces, that we have this big process, both entities go through it to try and build consensus around how these areas are going to grow. So a lot of times you hear that statement of like, well, nobody notified us. It's like, not necessarily true, because like, when they did the Mesa Together Plan just a few years ago, that is all county residents. You know, and they went through a similar exercise that we did in Fruta, albeit, I think we won with... But I feel like that is the way that they message to the community, how the community is going to grow, not through IGAs.
And I have some questions soon. You tell me if they're on future slides, or it's just a hold... And I have some questions soon. You tell me if they're on future slides or just say hold on. So urban growth boundaries are determined during our master comp plan that we do every ten years, right?
Correct.
And so that's heavily community engaged. Where we have under fourteen hundred residents, fourteen thousand residents, we had forty-four hundred or something like that replies or comments uh or engagements, whatever, we, we had serious community input, right? Which anybody would dream of anywhere in the U S, let alone in the valley, right? And so, and that master comp plan does, so when it comes in regard to the U G B, it helps to pr- manage the growth within our community, right?
Correct.
And emphasizes infill, which a lot of, uh, there's a number on that long list of that screen that you had before. A lot of that's infill, correct? Which helps to keep the, keep the outlying areas, uh what we love, which is farmland, right? And what gives us the authority to have the urban growth boundaries that we dictate where they're at through our due diligence, our research and community input and all that? How, where do we get that authority to say that this is where the boundaries are? Is that a state, state law?
So a- as far as the, I mean, there's the Annexation Act, there's the Subdivision Act, but as far as adopting a comprehensive plan, that there's no actual entitlements that are associated with that. So you're basically just drawing a line on the map, you know, and that's an area that you uh that you planned potentially have growth in the future. The purpose for that is that the um, they don't, they um, I think from a governance perspective, you wouldn't want to adopt a uh a document uh like that, it just changes everything for all parcels. They wanted the government and the governance to happen in these hearings uh on individual parcels and in a quasi judicial setting, rather than a legislative session or legislative uh action, which would just change the the law uh and and the zoning or or perhaps even the jurisdictional boundary. So the, the way that the law reads is it forces all that due process into this room. You know, with individual budget decisions on infrastructure improvements, zoning hearings, subdivision hearings, conditional use permits, uh and that is where you exercise your land use authority.
And so as a, let's just say someone's lives in the county, but lives, lives in the county outside of the city limits, but in the urban growth boundaries, they can stay county for as long as they want. No one's gonna force that zoning to change.
That is correct.
And become a city resident.
That's correct. Yeah, John and I were talking about this uh earlier today, uh where uh I think a really good example of of that occurring is that there's this uh perception that like if you build the roads next to my house, like I'm gonna be in the city. Like they're gonna force me to be in the city. And, you know, a really good example of that is like if you look at the northwest corner of like Pine and Otley, you know, the parcels in the county. That's all the roads and infrastructure, it's all city, you know? But um but at that point in time, uh there was enough uh growth pressure to justify uh building uh the roadways, uh independent of of whether or not that parcel was uh in the county or in the city. And uh we have never, I mean, since uh I, we've never in the last seven years annexed any of our enclaves, you know, or um or or forced anyone to annex. The only thing that has happened that that could be even remotely uh uh connected is that would be like if your septic system fails, you know, and you're within four hundred feet of a, of a sanitary line. That's when connection uh takes place. But even then, uh we have a path for folks to stay in the county and and have uh outside of the service boundary connection fees uh and monthly uh charges for sewer.
Appreciate it.
I know, in your world, the world, the word planning to, planning, it makes sense. But it's really a foresee where growth may occur. Because again, there's really not up to us, it's up to those private property owners if they, and we can just, yeah, that, okay, yeah, that would be an easier path because it's already in the U G B. We could see that ha- being working and where we have the infrastructure to handle that, correct? But it's not like, so it's, it's good foresight, but it's not like, oh yes, this is definitely gonna happen. This is just like, yeah, this, this makes sense where it might occur.
Yeah, one hundred percent. I I I think that like naturally though, you have to kind of overplan that. So you're not uh falling behind or reacting to uh areas of the community that like you were not perhaps uh thinking were going to develop in that fashion. A great example of that in my mind was uh uh when um the parcel that is just to the west of the Big Salt Wash, I mean, it's uh over a hundred and fifty acres. Uh it was a master planned community back in two thousand, uh like the two thousand and six to eight timeframe. And everybody like, uh, it's the largest like kind of contiguous parcel, it's already annexed. It's uh like, when is this gonna happen? Like, it certainly could support the number of group ups. But but it went in reality, uh uh Nineteen Road started to become a popular place to develop. And Ben's land holdings changed. And so I would say like it's uh to the credit of the council, it's the credit, credit of the community, when they drew that line twenty plus years ago, you know, we were able to react uh with the actual plan to serve it with sanitary sewer and uh be able to grow from that area before all the residents. All right, I'm gonna get, I promise I'm gonna get to the third slide here.
It's not you, it's not you, it's us.
So uh again, I I wanted to make sure that like this is uh for the edification of the uh the public and also uh the council that like the, when we talk about the urban development boundary or growth boundary, we are talking about the city's comprehensive plan. We've decided um, you know, as a community, not as staff members or or individual council members or council as a whole, that uh that's what the urban growth boundaries can be through a process just like uh council member Hansi mentioned before, which was, you know, over four thousand people, you know, thirty plus pop up events, you know, at churches and schools and the Rotary and Kiwanis. I mean, I remember our previous city manager always said that like, you know, uh we had to say goodbye to our families for six months while we did that. I think we really went above and beyond and and over the top. And a lot of times that can look relatively stale and just like a couple of open houses and then an adopted plan, but we certainly didn't take that path. So I think that, you know, the comprehensive plan is one of uh the city's most transparent documents because it uh was viewed, the eyeballs of a lot of residents here, a lot of review agency partners. Several people that are in the land use and development business and shared uh quite a few components of of this uh of this community and its future. And so the purpose why we have our urban growth boundary is uh to coordinate certainly with uh annexations and infrastructure planning, uh encourage infill like um council member Hansi said, uh prevent sprawl. Uh it's one of the biggest concerning things that uh I remember talking to leadership team in council at that time is that, you know, if we just continue to leapfrog growth, uh we certainly could be in a situation where we can't afford the infrastructure that uh that's out there and then certainly preserve agriculture and open spaces. Um comp plan, long range plan uh for growth and development, uh those are the statutory citations. I figured that that would be helpful uh just to show that like there is some teeth, it's a backup for uh the actions that the council's taken relative to uh approving the comprehensive plan. And there's also some restrictions placed on uh communities by the state, can't grow without outside of your three mile area, which is you can't grow beyond three miles on any edge of the community. Uh and certainly like the one sixth contingencies, you can't just like randomly go and annex parcels that don't have a connection to your already existing municipal boundaries. And so, you know, to sum that all up, you know, the, the plan also uh establishes uh goals for the areas that uh we think are the most greatly affected, just certainly transportation, utilities, police fire, uh the whole kind of suite or services. And so we have to first make sure that we can support all those folks uh, you know, in that way. Um that it could potentially be a a residence of the city, uh if they go through and exercise their entitlements through a land use process. These are just some components that were uh uh kind of extrapolated out of the plan. You know, cer- certainly like gave us some guiding principles on housing and recreation and um, you know, infrastructure. And uh why I put that up there is that, you know, at that time, those guiding principles that make up many of the things that are on that list triggered a series of events that uh have been happening uh for really like the last five years. And that is we adopted the comp plan, then we adopted the frost plan, then we adopted the circulation plan. Then we uh, you know, adopted uh our sewer master plan. And so, you know, there's been so many uh public facing documents uh that uh have indicated that uh almost as a check in, that these are the areas of the community that we're planning to grow into. Again, the um the annexation and U B, uh U G B, they're synonymous with one another so long as they can meet the statutory requirements of annexation. We don't turn that, we abide by it, it's uh riddled throughout our land development code. And we actually cannot go and force uh someone to annex their property. You can't do it unless you uh vote uh or there's a petitioner. And so um, you know, I think that a lot of times that's a little bit of a misconception that like we can kind of force areas to grow. But we can't force property owners to petition for annexation and for zone of annexation.
So, so Dan, I thank you for, for everything you're doing right now. This is great. It's like you're giving us a master class on it and I really appreciate it. And I'm happy that you got to the annexation because that's where I really wanted to kind of dive in a little bit to, for my own personal knowledge. But I also think it's good for the public as well to know. And you, you hit on exactly what I was gonna ask. Basically with annexation, and maybe we can have you go through it just a little bit deeper. But annexation is, a- at least from what I've seen is homeowners come to us because they want to annex in. There's not very often that we're trying to prompt them into annexing in. And and I guess I'm, I'm not really approaching this the way I wanted to. I've been kind of sitting back waiting for it. I didn't expect it to have that. Can you really kind of walk us through that? Because it has to be a mutual thing, correct? How does annexation work within the urban growth boundary? And if we don't, if somebody doesn't want to be annexed, they don't have to, correct?
That is a hundred percent correct. I, I mean, I think a lot of times the uh, the assumption is that we're uh out communicating with people about areas we feel like uh could grow and develop. But when in reality, we have uh two meetings, you can sign up for them every week. It's a general meeting and a pre-application meeting. All the people that have gone through the annexation and the zone of annexation have gone through that general uh meeting, which is essentially a time to sit down with planning, engineering, buyer, other affected departments. Oftentimes, we've got other review agencies like Yoot Water, a part of that. And we talk about whether or not the property that they want to petition for annexation makes sense for the city, complies with the state laws and that we can reasonably serve it. Um and there have been properties where uh the city has uh resisted annexation mostly due to the fact that the neighborhood would have to have a lift station. We would eventually have to take over that infrastructure, it would cost our enterprise money, uh that they need to run their operations. So um it's not always a foregone conclusion. And um the other times that people go through that process is uh uh when they want to connect to sanitary sewer. And like I illustrated before, that's not an automatic uh annexation where it has been for others in the uh in the past. But it goes through a relatively exhaustive process, the most exhaustive that we have outside of uh planned unit development. Uh where it gets legally noticed, uh it goes to planning commission, it has four weeks of consecutive notice in the paper. And uh and eventually it makes it to a second reading for annexation and for uh for zoning. So it's uh, it's never preempted by us. You know, the only time that there's uh um a uh a preemption relative to jurisdictional boundary uh takes place with roads, you know, and that uh is, you know, kind of going back to the example I gave you before. Uh there does come a time where the county says, we're surrounded by city. Are we gonna continue to maintain this eleven foot lane on this side of the road? Or is that gonna be something that the city is willing to um to annex and to maintain? That's the only time where uh where it's not a property owner driven. But even then, the county has to sign off on that since they're, air quotes, the owner.
That's just the road, not, not property.
That's, that's correct. I just, if you don't mind, Dan, I was just gonna add to that, that um even if a road is annexed into the city, and I think that was um councillor Miller that just asked that question, that does not in any way, shape or form automatically annex any adjacent properties. As, you know, as Dan has said it numerous times now, property owners are in control of whether or not their property is annexed. Um that's, you know, that's entirely up to them. And so city can't force that annexation on them and really doesn't want to because you're not in the business of, you know, dictating people's private property rights. So just wanted to add a little to that.
And 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 that brings up a, a really good point. So, you know, what, the, the perception would be that like we would uh, you know, or be able to annex properties and roadways. Uh but the, there really is no sense for the city to do that. I mean, the um, it just costs money, you know, or lane miles a road. A lot of times they have to be completely reconstructed because they've been milled and overlaid, you know, tons of times. So they're usually not in the best shape. And so the only way that it makes sense for cities to annex property is to uh grow residentially, you know, which pays property tax and the assumption is those folks will pay sales, sales tax within your community, start businesses, you know, or it's a commercial use. And so the, the, the reality is there's always a project that starts the conversation that has nothing to do with the city other than somebody wanting to come property or somebody coming in that wants to develop on behalf of somebody else's property. So one uh, one quick go back uh on uh kind of inside the urban development boundary, but still in the county. The only, the, the way that that relationship works is that if uh a property owner in the urban development boundary, boundary but presently in the county, wants to develop their property, they come to the city because they need urban infrastructure in order to do a minor subdivision or a major subdivision. Um if they want to exercise their zoning entitlements and rights, build a shed, have an A D U, replace your septic system or leach field, have animals, we have no say. We are not the land use authority. The only way that we become the a- the land use authority is if they voluntarily come in and annex. Uh and uh they go through our process to obtain the necessary zoning approvals or entitlements to do project that they want to do. Uh so uh and then oftentimes, what happens is that they end up having to come into the city. They develop and then they have to build by our standards, which is essentially urban level standards, curb gutter and sidewalk and then extend utilities. So that's how those facilities in all likelihood get um uh get extended. Where the Nineteen Road example is devoid of that, is that we didn't want to spend yesterday's money to build tomorrow's infrastructure. So we didn't want to collect those impact fees oh ten years ago and then spend them on a capacity project on Nineteen Road after there is anticipated growth in the area. So what ends up happening is that every time a neighborhood comes in, let's take a, you know, an Oak Creek Estates right next to the school, for example. They built uh Fremont Street, eighteen and a half road, the frontage of of that and K and four tenths road. And then they get credits on their transportation impact fees uh to uh essentially not have to pay those every unit. The relationship and how the city's being made whole for Nineteen Road is that we are going to spend impact fee dollars, uh sewer fund balance and general funds to build nineteen. That will then be paid back by uh all of the uh, all of the transportation impact fees for all the houses that are generated on Nineteen Road. Uh and that's also tied to an inflationary index that keeps up with construction costs. So that's the rationale on. on on how we are approaching the corridor projects. As for the other subdivisions that have frontage on other roadways, they extend those as a part of their projects. John, do you want to touch a little bit on kind of how we plan for roadway expansion?
Thank you. I'm gonna kind of peel back the the cover a little here. Now that I'm safely voided by fruit, I'm gonna let you I'll let you know a little bit about my ignorance. When when things get developed, I don't know how many toilets are going in. I don't know how many times a day people are going to use those. I don't know how much they're going to drive their car. There's a lot of things I don't know. And so, building that urban growth boundary eliminates some of the unknowns for me. I've got a lot of, a lot of guidance I can use, industry standards, you know, I can say this average house is going to use this much. But it's still a guess. And so, for me, I don't look at, I think he described it as a visual message for the public. I look at it as a way for me to kind of wrap my arms around, how big do I need to make this pipe? Because I can't put every pipe in five foot in diameter. I need to make it make sense, but it'd make no sense at all. Put in a 12 inch pipe and in five years we need a 15. And so for me, that that line on the map makes me a little bit less ignorant about what I have to. So on this slide, as we plan the road network and we plan the lane configurations, we're guided by a lot of the documents that Dan's on. Circulation plan, land use code, traffic studies. Every time a subdivision goes in, they have to tell us what what's the impact to their surrounding road. We take those documents, we review them, we make sure they make sense. They're usually prepared by people that specialize in traffic studies. And so, as we get those, we aggregate that data and over time, we try to plan ahead and say, right now, this road's working, but how long do we have till it won't work? And as far as whether a road works or not, it's not like a bridge that it's going to fall down. It's not. It doesn't disappear, it doesn't break. What happens is everybody's unhappy. And so, unhappy if the road's too small. People are unhappy if we work on the roads. But if the road gets too small and then we work on it, people are going to be twice as unhappy. And so, part of our job is to plan ahead and say, when does this road need need to move up to a different classification? Again, I think I already covered a lot of this. You know, we use the circulation plan, we use the comp plan. We try to make sure that these, that our our infrastructure works for everybody that uses it. It's in our interest to have multimodal use. And so, you know, if you you kind of envision from the city center out, there's a lot of pedestrian facilities as you're in the center and as you move out towards the edges, there's less. 19 road in particular, there's two schools nearby. Some of the biggest users of sidewalks, bike lanes, alternative uses to get to school are going to be school kids, particularly middle schoolers, first year of high school. And as we looked ahead and saw that, you know, we're going to get all of these houses out there, there's a good chance a lot of these houses are going to have students in them. We need to plan ahead for that and provide more than what's already there, which is just 24 feet of asphalt and a gravelly shoulder and not really a safe way to move. Well, these are, these are some of the tools we use when we when we design a road. And there's a there's a fair amount that goes into it. You know, if it's just a two lane road, it's pretty simple, but working out the intersections, working out the geometry, making sure it's safe. So like I mentioned earlier, we have traffic studies. We try to project growth. Again, our ignorance in doing that, we're 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 giving it an educated guess, but we don't know for sure. We use the Fruit of Land Use Code. There's a document that we all refer to as the M U T C D. It's the Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices. It basically ensures that if you're in Fruta or Denver or Boston, a stop sign is going to look the same. The spacing between them is going to be similar. And just so the general public is a little less confused as they use it. And then roadway design manual, it's the green book.
I'm sorry, tell me again what that last one is?
The green book, it it goes more into what's the geometry of the road? How long, you know, how long do you take to make the lane a little bit wider? You know, taper rates for different speeds, radiuses, just horizontal geometry, vertical geometry?
Nice, okay, thank you.
You'll know if we do it wrong. Anyway, like I said, the only, the the way a road fails is it doesn't work for the users. And for longer than I've been around, they've used what's called a level of service. Generally, we try to keep it between a C and a D. A is, you know, you're driving down L Road at three in the morning. There's no cars around you. It's free flowing. And a lot of roads are A levels of service depending on the time of day. It's those, it's those really hard times like pick up and drop off time at the high school and middle school. E, again, it's pretty free flowing, but you're seeing a car in front of you. Our length is generally about 20 feet. So you you've got a car, a football field ahead of you. C, it's just getting shorter and shorter. What we really don't want to have happen is F. F is what happens on in front of the schools in the morning. F is stop and go. You move when the car in front of you moves. It goes like that. So I wasn't here when the 19 road decisions were made, but I wouldn't have changed the decisions that were made on that. They they looked at this. They look, I I did help with some of the the intersection configurations. We we go out there, we put up a camera and we measure and record every direction that a car turns. And based on that, some some intersections have one lane that does everything. Other intersections are going to have three lanes, one for left, one for right, and one for straight through and and everything. I think that's all I have on mine. Any questions?
Can can we talk about the road classification just a little bit? So is this a correct statement that road classification doesn't really dictate anything? It's just used as a tool for planning?
Classification gives me a guide for in the future when somebody puts in subdivision, I'm going to tell them where to put the curb and gutter or where we need extra. Just because it's on the map doesn't mean we're going to build it until it's needed. 19 road, for example, is going to be a three lane section. It's going to be a minor collector. It's planned to be an arterial. If if growth goes the way growth is anticipated, it could at some point be a five lane road. We're planning for that now, making sure that when we set like bridge elevations, you know, road slope down as they go out. We're making the middle of the road high enough that as we get out to the edge, we're not going down into the deck.
Can I build on your question?
Yeah.
Who controls? Or what class, who controls classification? You know, because C dot has some, feds have some, Fruta has some, like who gets to control those classifications in terms of how things actually get built out?
For the most part in Fruta, we control it. There are roads that are are on the national highway, highway. I can't remember the last word. No, not that. They 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 keep a list of roads that are important for national uses.
Sure.
Most of the time, they're they're highways, North Avenue and Grand Junction.
So but here we can have within the city, then we can have Fruta road classifications, C dot can have their own classification. But who actually gets to, like whose classification kind of controls what happens?
Can I, oh, sorry, John, to interrupt. Do you mind if I speak a little bit to that? Coming out of the ceiling, I apologize. John can probably speak more, but I I think Mayor, just you were talking a bit about this. So you're right, you know, C dot classifies roads. Federal Department of Transportation classifies roads. Municipalities, local governments classify roads. But they're, they all are classified by those agencies for whatever agency is classifying the roads, you know, what purpose the agency has. So sometimes that's a funding classification. And so, E dot may list a road in the county as, you know, minor collector, which means they're going to provide the county less money for that road than they would for a road that they've designated as arterial. From the city's perspective, it's designating roads as John was talking about, for planning purposes, you know, what does that mean, you know, as we go forward? On, you know, let's say we move to an whatever road next. You know, what are we anticipating the traffic to be? What has the traffic shown? What is the development showing out there? You know, that sort of thing. So there, those classifications are in place for differing reasons in a lot of cases, in most cases, I think. And so, you know, even C dot just confirmed, like whatever classification cities, city of Fruta is making of its roads. You don't have to go check in with C dot about that. E dot has, may have its own classification of a road, and that's going to say how much money you get for it. Does that make sense?
Sure. So we're we're not beholden to what they're classifying it. We get to classify them ourselves.
Yeah, because we're doing it for
Based on our needs.
Right, local planning purposes. Yeah, and C dot's doing it. And again, John, please chime in if I'm explaining this incorrectly, but you know, counties get money for roads and they get money from the state and they get money from the feds. And so, the state and the feds are going to classify roads because that's how they give out their dollars. You know, they're going to give more for bigger roads, major roads, and they are for local roads, that sort of thing.
So if anything, we would actually try to argue for classifications to be different if we didn't think that we were going to get funded enough for what we want those roads to be, correct?
Correct.
Well, a lot of the, correct. And a lot of the, some, a lot of roads in the city, and again, John, chime in, aren't getting funds from the state because they are truly local roads and therefore, you know, they don't fall under that category. But but yes, I mean, so anyway, I guess I see it as like apples and oranges. We're using it as a planning tool. Another agency is using it as a money tool, you know, so they're not necessarily going to match, but they don't have to. I mean, we may have completely different categories and names than C dot does.
I think that's that's the class, that's the clarification that we're looking for.
Well, and can I have actually one more clarification? Because even as our own, as our own classification of the road, but we're planning for the future, it still may look different even than as our current classification because we're planning for future use.
Correct.
Okay.
You know, to be completely there, there's the if, thens or buts. Anything around city market, we we have to fight it out with C dot on on roads like that. They, you know, they maintain that that signal. Any any changes we make there, we have to negotiate with them and it's it's usually amicable. Anything we do, like, for example, South Mesa Street, the where we intersect Highway 6 and 50, they get a lot of say in what we did there. And so, we had some other preferences just to match more of the city of Fruta details. But they, that's their right away. They own it. We do it their way there.
But John, you're speaking to how the road is constructed or the signal is managed, not how the road is classified. So yeah, you're talking about yeah, I just want to be clear.
They do not take into account what we call it. We don't take into account what they call it.
It's great information. I appreciate it. Thank you.
I just wanted to go back to one thing that maybe we didn't mention, but I believe the mayor had this as a question when he requested this presentation. And there's oftentimes, I think, a little bit of a, we'll, we'll get a traffic study. It will determine what's required. It will, you know, it's coming down the line, you know, and oftentimes, I think that in a public setting, especially like during like zoning applications, you know, if people want that information, then, you know, they don't want it, you know, in the future. And so, I just wanted to make sure that the the council and community understood that, you know, that they don't just go get a traffic study and we just have to accept it. You know, the, there's a, you know, they have to submit a methodology sometimes to C dot, but in in our local road system, to our engineering department. And we get to decide and have comment distributions. So they can't say that, you know, all the traffic's going to go away from the thing that I'm building, you know, and like nobody's ever going to come here. You know, we we get to check the their homework, you know, the same way that we do the civil plans. Oftentimes, the decisions that are made in traffic studies and in civil subdivision plans or commercial site plans, they affect the city's infrastructure. And so, we get a say on that. And like John said, you know, it's not just like some projects that have to do that. All projects have to do that. There have been instances where it's, you know, two lot subdivision or three lot subdivision that's not going to add a lot of traffic to an already built out area where there might be an exception or you might require a letter, but that gets looked at every single time a project comes before the community development department. And then, again, I mean, we probably touched on this, you know, several times already. This is the blueprint. We're following the blueprint. One thing that struck me as as John was talking about, like, who decides what and when? I just want the council and and community to know that, like, these things are like exhaustively studied. I mean, the the compliance that we have at all the intersections at 6 and 50 and on 340 and on Aspen has this lengthy document. It kind of looks like a little comprehensive plan or land development code, and it's the C dot access control plan. So, you know, it's not even like use based where it's like, you know, here, we're going to build a grocery store here. We're going to build, you know, a gas station here. It's like, these are the accesses you're closing down. If, you know, if you propose something, you know, on our network. And so, they do a lot of time studying that for highway system and interstate system. We get to decide the level of service for for the city. And one thing that I feel like has been confused time, time and time again is that the classifications of roadways in the county is the county's business. All our circulation plan does is create a future classification where all the things we talked about before have to happen in order for those to be built out. With that, we've definitely entertained.
I want to kind of break protocol a little bit because we've been up here for a while. And I think we're going to need to take a short bio break and wrap this up. And I know we're all here, you know, there's other people here for something that's coming up next, but I do think we need to take a seven minute bio bio break. So it's 9:30.
Are we done with with this when we come back then? Are you going to keep them up?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, they're freaking, that was a big part of it. They didn't want to brand it.
All right, we are back one minute early. So it's nine 36 and we are back. Any additional questions? Before we let them go.
I just guess I have one comment is I really appreciate you guys going over that and, and having that dialogue with us. Because it's definitely for the benefit of us and the community. Because, you know, development is a very challenging thing. And I think as a community, we're doing very good at managing it. Like you said, Dan, 2% is a well-managed growth rate. And we've been at that one and a half and two and a half for many, many, many years. And so I appreciate you doing that. And I guess just want to make the last comment of like, if anybody has any questions, go to staff, go talk to them, community, or come to us. And of course we'll help you through it and send you over to staff who are, are much more knowledgeable about the details, but we're transparent. Everything's open book for us. And so we really appreciate people coming and talking to us because that's where we can have really good progress is having quality discussions in this meeting and having quality discussions on the side. So thank you very much, staff.
Thank you. All right, we are going to mix up the schedule a little bit. Because we have some people here, I'm sure it's past their bedtime. So we're going to put a pause on city managers report and go to council reports and actions. And what would be first on that? Oh, swearing in. So I'm going to ask. Okay. Deb and Amanda, please come on up for your swearing, official swearing in. Nope.
You ready? Okay. If you'll raise your right hand, please, and repeat after me. I, Amanda Quigley.
I, Amanda Quigley.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the constitution of the United States.
That I will support the constitution of the United States.
That I will support the constitution of the state of Colorado.
That I will support the constitution of Colorado.
And the laws of the state of Colorado.
And the laws of the state of Colorado.
And will faithfully perform the duties.
And will faithfully perform the duties.
Of the office of city councillor.
Of the office of city councillor.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
To the best of my ability.
The best of my ability. Congratulations.
Let's take your seat at the dials.
Do you want a family photo? Yeah. I mean, they stayed here the whole time. Yeah. Yeah, we should all come around. Oh, I know. Way to hang in there, family. All right.
Welcome.
Yeah. Settle into that seat. Get used to it. All right. So we are going to continue on with council reports and actions, and then we'll jump back to the city managers. So.
We get to go before this?
Yeah. So, uh, changes to certain upcoming city council workshops and meetings?
Yeah. So per the request of the council, this is a request to cancel the May workshop. And reschedule the June workshop from that Tuesday to the Monday due to the Cary Municipal League Conference that most of us are attending. And the May workshop due to Memorial Day of the day before, or celebrated the day before.
Okay, great. And those invites I think have already been sent or canceled.
Yep. Yep.
All right, great. All right, uh, we're going to go to council report.
Mr. Mayor, we need a motion.
I moved to council stuff.
Shocker.
All right, second.
Do I have a second?
Reschedule. Schedule, cancel.
Here we have a first.
Second.
Okay.
First is second. Any additional discussion?
I couldn't leave that out.
All right. Would you poll council?
Counselor Quigley. Counselor Miller.
Yes.
Counselor Williams.
Absolutely.
Counselor Hansi.
Yes.
Counselor Persher. And Counselor Parrish.
Yeah.
Motion passes six, zero.
It's great to hear the count of six again. All right. So with that, moving on to council reports and action items, anybody want to go first?
Oh, you go. The skate park has had a lot of really concerning incidents over the last few weeks with, well, Reed Park in general, but it, the, the issues seem to be coming from kiddos who are frequent, frequenting the skate park. And I've had several moms, families reach out about just really concerning behaviors and things that are happening there that they don't want to take their kids to Reed Park because of. And I agree, like after hearing, you know, the, the behaviors that are happening there. Um, I'm not sure what we can or are doing or like, yeah. So just maybe on the radar for a future discussion or maybe like a workshop or.
Yeah, we can definitely have staff look into that between our parks and rec staff and also see if there's anything that's popping up in police and report back at our next meeting. Yeah.
I'm wondering even if our community engagement officer might pop over there and hang.
Sure. Yeah.
I'd already be on his radar. I, I would be interested to hear though, like what, what they're seeing, or if there's maybe more we can be doing to brainstorm some ideas on keeping that space, you know, friendly and accessible to everybody. I don't want to exclude, you know, the use, the, these, these people using the skate park. We just, the behaviors are not Fruta. They're not what I expect from our, from our youth and from, from our community. I would love to see, you know, that change. And that's all I've got, actually.
Amanda?
I did have the opportunity to participate in Girls on the Run over the weekend, and that was an awesome event. I heard ridiculously high amount of girls participated in that. So just thankful that we have a community that people want to bring events to and that we just spent awesome time.
Right.
I would second that. I got to walk over around the corner and watch them as they came by and my daughter on her bike leading the pace. It was great. It is a fabulous event. I also participated on my Grand Valley Region committee. And we accepted the annual report of that committee, which took a whole hour to present and very thorough, very well done. About all I have to report. I missed out on the most exciting and fun part of your participation at the CCI conference.
You, you missed a good one.
I was driving to Canyon City and back and I had a good visit.
That's loud to hear. All right. Anything else? CML. I know we submitted to speak at two. I heard like one got rejected. Are we presenting? Do we know?
No, um, they did not accept any of the submissions that we provided.
Okay.
We had never heard back about the second one. So we weren't.
Yeah. Katie, did you hear back about the second one? Both were rejected with the one email, which was kind of confusing because we figured we'd get each one, but we can submit again next year and see if they're interested at that point.
Okay. Thank you for that update.
Of course.
We heard a lot about 18 and a half road. I think that's a discussion we should continue. I know it's gone to the traffic team to kind of review. From a timing standpoint, how long does that take to kind of work through that process?
Yeah, we're actually currently working on that and our police department has been pretty involved with the community members, several of them who spoke out tonight. So I do have some information I was going to bring up during the city manager report, but I can touch upon that now. So as with most complaints, if it does meet certain conditions, and that usually gets elevated to our traffic committee, which consists of our public works director, our police chief, our senior engineer, our planning director as well. And they kind of evaluate if we need to make any changes based upon those specific complaints. We, they've been evaluating this. This specific road has been in our step program for several years. Our step program is anytime something comes up, we take certain steps to get more data and that data can help with our decision-making after that. So we have a good amount of data on this. We've had the radar trailer out there. In fact, if you look at the Google maps, as you go on it, you can see the radar trailer in previous photos. We have the traffic tubes out there right now to get some more speed data because a lot of the concerns tonight that were brought up were about speed. So we'll have that data pretty soon and then we can make some decisions from there. But just some of the general data we have right now. Since these complaints have come up, the police department has spent nine hours out there enforcing mostly in 20 to 30 minute increments in between calls throughout that whole time. Most of the observations were considered light traffic along that road. They did nine stops and issued nine warnings. There has been two crashes along that since 2020. And the most recent one that was brought up with the house being crashed. Speed may have been a factor, but the overwhelming factor was alcohol use in that. So one thing that we have been doing and Ed, our communities, community engagement police officer has been meeting with the Adobe Creek Golf Course staff to just educate about, and they've been very open and very receptive and they've been great to work with. Just educational efforts about responsible drinking and responsible alcohol consumption, because a lot of the stuff that we generally see out there is, you know, related to that. So we've been working with the golf course. We've been in constant communication with those property owners. And once we have some more data, we can report back. But yeah, a lot of time and effort has been placed in the area as of recently. We do have our chief police, Dave Kraus, and our city engineer here as well. If you want to answer, ask any kind of specific questions.
And for me, if, I know, if, as long as we know for me, you're working on it and just kind of a timeframe of when you can report back would be great.
Yeah.
Is it, we're talking about four weeks to have all that data together?
Well, and I was wondering if, if, and I'm, I have to apologize because when you guys first said 18 road, I thought you meant out on 18 road and the
Oh, sure.
The problem that everybody was complaining about over the weekend about trash and craziness out there. So it took me a minute to catch on because I wanted to talk about this part, this 18 road as well.
Yeah.
Is it, can we look at what it would cost to put speed bumps in there and, and or changing?
Make sure we follow the process.
No, I, I'm just curious though, if, because to me, yeah, if it's part of the analysis, would that be a part of that, right? Because it seems to me that would be really the only thing that's going to slow them down.
Yeah, that one's, that one's tough. And we don't use speed bumps often anymore. You know, the best guidelines, especially as John was mentioning earlier, we use the MT CUD, the model uniform traffic code, or no, traffic standards. And, you know, Um, and uh, you know, to generally slow down, we use traffic calming. That's why on paper, we added those two pedestrian islands and the crosswalk.
Sure.
Narrow some of that so people naturally slow down. But yes, speed bumps uh generally kind of aren't the best practice, but I'll let the experts speak to that. Yeah.
Sure.
Yeah, so we did. We did get the traffic data. We pulled the tubes middle of the day today. I've done a real quick look through it. Um, there is speeding going on there, uh but we have to figure out commonalities, what the problems are. I I don't think we want to put a speed bump on a thirty-five mile per hour road, um but like Shannon mentioned, there are other ways, narrowing lanes, putting in islands, do doing things to make the road feel less safe so that people will drive slower. So it's it's something we're working on.
Yeah, just as long as we're doing something because.
And I I want to get back to that question of like when, not beholden to it, but like when do we think we'll have a recommendation?
It'll probably within four weeks, two to four weeks.
Great. And I do appreciate the fact that you're working with the golf course. I I'm sure alcohol does play a factor. We've all been out there.
Yeah, one of the things that stood out was Northbound was definitely faster than Southbound.
And now, do we have plans to communicate with that HOA? Uh, yeah, the police department has been communicating with them and one of the uh the property owners that spoke tonight um as well. Um, so they did provide us with all the material on a flash drive prior to, so we can go ahead and email uh that to council.
Got it.
Oh, already got it. Okay, you already sent it. Great. Um, but yeah, it's something that we've been working on and evaluating. I think it'll be a great opportunity like to just give them a good debrief as well besides just us and um if it's an invite to our meeting as well, when we get a debrief, that's great too, but uh it'll be nice to give them like, I think it'd be good to explain, it's like, hey, we went through these twenty steps. This is what we did, not just, hey, we're gonna do X and Y, but the whys in the data behind it. I think that'd be great because it was great to hear that community coming and and it's.
Just so you're aware, I was the one who originally spoke to Soye Chex. They called me. Um, and she indicated that this is not the first time they've brought up the issue. Um, but.
To staff or council?
Having the communication, I guess she was concerned that there hadn't been a whole lot recently and this accident sort of precipitated the concern uh being uh raised at a higher level. And uh uh in speaking with Shannon, I think they have responded well and they have voiced their concerns to us. So I think we're on the right track.
Good.
Uh, that's it for me.
Uh, yeah, that was actually on the top of my list, the eighteen and a half. So thanks for all of that. That's super um great. Along those same lines, not nearly as dramatic, but there was yet another um accident on Peach and Paper. And it just is, I I I, as we see like tonight, like the people who live there know what's actually happening. And I know sometimes people just complain to complain, so that's aside. I don't think that that's obviously not what was happening tonight, nor what I am saying now. I'm just saying, I live right there and it is literally almost on a daily basis where you obviously not where there's an accident, but where you hear the almost accident, the screech of the brakes, the whatnot. And I know that it has been looked like there's been like um more paint to keep people from parking as close on um on um paper, but I don't know if there's a way to, because I, in my mind, I think four-way stop is ideal, but I also know that that's probably not happening, so fine. Um, but maybe something where there's signs on um the north and south that communicate east and west, don't stop, or this is not a four-way stop. Like something, because that's what, that's where the issue is. People who are going um north or south think that the east and west people are gonna stop. They think it's a four-way stop. And so they stop and then they go and then they hit people because it's not a four-way stop. So it it's it's super, super um often. Just, just, and that's sounds personal, I guess, but um there's, there's that. Um. Let's see. Uh, thank you, guys. I was gonna bring up the impact fees and how that is um helping pay for nineteen road, but you brought you all, that was brought up, so thank you for that. Can we get an effective mic? This is, I mean, I know we have a new mic and that's great, but the stand still is weird, right? Like, I mean, it's still falling down on people and stuff, so I don't know. That's aside also kind of, but except it's very noticeable, like people.
I don't think it's a silly, totally aside, because I'm also continually hearing people in the back can't hear.
Yeah.
And I don't know if that's, we're not speaking into the mics enough or if it's an AV issue.
Mayor, I move to amend the budget uh twenty-five four.
Out of order, but duly known, okay.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Katie said that those speakers back there just aren't the greatest, and that's why she turned the volume up earlier in the meeting and then apparently that causes feedback, so.
Uh, and we can talk about this kind of on our Thursday meetings that perhaps we, it's time to kind of put forth a plan. This is, we did, it's, it's continuing. We got to make sure everybody can hear, so.
Uh, let's see. And then as was alluded to, five of us um participated at the Colorado Creative Industries Summit, and that was uh really fantastic. Like, I think we all had just such an amazing time being together, an amazing time sharing our stories individually and collectively, and it was beautiful to see how it was received, like how we spoke and were up there together, clearly came across exactly how we hoped it would. It was just received so well by the audience and we had a lot of time talking with people afterward and it was just like for each of you, because that was really super awesome. And um also Dan and I uh were on pan, separate panels at the um Western Colorado G Jet Economic Summit too, so that was also fun, not quite as fun. Both did fantastic. I attended both sessions and then you did great.
Anything else?
No. No.
Okay.
I I don't know. Are we gonna um assign?
Thank you for bringing that up. No, we're not gonna do it tonight. Um, Shannon sent a uh list. I've got it. I wanted to review it. I'll make sure everybody here gets it. I don't want to do a major restructure because we're just a year into it, but I do think there's some stuff that we should look at and we, so it's not a free for all.
Yeah, I know. Yeah. But in the meantime, should I continue?
Yes, or yeah, it's on, we're gonna do that on our next meeting, but I'll make sure you guys get that ahead of time.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
Um, looking forward to our community cleanup this Saturday, which I think is gonna be fantastic. Um, it'll be fun to hear how many uh more dumpsters we do this year than last year.
How many dumpsters do we have this year, Kimberly?
Eight, wow. How many did we do last?
How big are they, thirty yard dumpsters?
Forty, oh, wow. That's, yeah. Yeah. So I'll, I'll see you on Saturday.
Yep.
Doubled it.
Where are we stationed at?
City shops.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
It's awesome. I'll see you there, Kimberly.
Me too.
Uh, Snook's Bottom Cleanup, I don't think we we've talked about this in an official meeting, but uh went very well. Um, over fifty volunteers and thirty trees planted. Um, I haven't heard any died yet, so we're doing good. No, but no, it was, it was great to see the the turnout from various organizations.
This rain helps.
Yeah, and um it was fun to to help plant some trees and um keep beautifying the area, so you'll see it all around. Um. Is it possible to get cooling, some more cooling in this room?
Sure, yeah.
Last few meetings have been a little warm, and it's not just because I wear a jacket.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Um, let's see, and last, I just want to say, congrats, Dan. Appreciate it. You uh being part of or changing your pace for the team and uh joining uh joining the ranks of the assistant city manager, so thank you. That's all I have, Mayor.
Um, I had uh, oh, so I missed my police thing. I had something pop up, but I reached out to to chief and uh he assured me that it was just as bor, I mean, not boring, but just this. I didn't miss anything really important and I wanted to make sure that he needed any support on anything, but no, we, I I unfortunately didn't make that one. Um, I did however, get to fill in for the museum board. Um, my takeaway from that was there was a couple of things. Um, and and I don't know, I I was hoping maybe we could bring, Rich, maybe you could bring this to the tourism board. Looking at some of the stats, the digs are way down, like the signups for the dinosaur digs are way down. Um, their overall income is, they're, they're not, I don't know. They they seemed positive about it, but me being a first time sit there, look at some stuff, I was like, wow, these are not good numbers. So what I'm wondering is if maybe we can ask the tourism uh board maybe to throw a little bit of love towards the uh towards the dinosaur museum.
Say love, what are you ref?
Well, promote it a little bit. As they're putting up stuff about events that are happening, you know, maybe we can find out from the dinosaur museum some information about their digs and some things like that. It'd be nice to um do a little push for that, especially, I know that we're, we're trying to do a bigger push on tourism towards families. The dinosaur museum would do that.
Generator for that? People paying to go dig?
Yeah.
Is that what's?
Yeah, it is. And just the number, and to be honest, just the experience of it, I myself, I feel that's an amazing thing that we offer here. Um, that's not every, not every community gets to send their kids out to go dig for dinosaur bones, and I think that's an amazing thing. So I really would like to see if we could shore them up to some degree.
Have a representative from the dinosaur museum on that.
The tourism board does?
Yes, we do.
Hmm.
The new, new member.
What was it? What's her name? Do you know?
Molly Shepperson. She's the uh communications director for museums of Western Colorado.
Okay.
Yeah.
Does have a voice.
All right, well, I, me as a city council person that had to go there, I I walked away with that.
Didn't modify the
Sure.
Budget for the commission.
Yes.
Okay.
Tonight, we did that.
Uh, to me, it was just something easy and that we could ask if they could throw, throw some stuff, maybe aim and do some posts or something. Any, anyway, I think anything we can do to help them, it's not gonna be a heavy lift and it would help to some degree. Um, another issue that they're dealing with is they have provided uh voting there for a while. And apparently, the, you know about the issue, right? There, there's a
Yeah.
There's, there's a period of time where the visitor center is doing a remodel and they're utilizing space in the museum. And so um they, on the same time
Yep.
length.
Yep.
And so I was, and I don't know, do we still do voting here?
Um, the elections department and the county clerk did reach out to us to see if there are alternatives for voting spaces in Fruta. Um, they need it for a couple of weeks a year, uh, you know, the June primaries and then the November general. Um, when they occur, they've said the civic center is too small because that was an easy one to offer up. They used to do it in the independence room, but they have definitely outgrown their capacity there. Um, we've been looking in the community center that poses other challenges um with that location, uh parking being a large challenge uh over there, but also just the amount of use it gets of public traffic as well could. Um, uh, there could be a little concerned about that. So I think the elections would like to preferably stay over at Dinosaur Journey and that benefit residents as well because we're not changing locations too frequently. But we're still having those discussions and kind of um mediating between museums of Western Colorado and Mesa County since we are the property owner.
Okay, because that.
He related, but there is an empty pool building.
Yeah, and, yeah, I think, yeah.
I mean, the elections used to take place in school, like.
Yeah.
School building all the time.
That, that's actually a really good idea and it, and I, I know that it's, it's a sucky problem, but it would be nice if we could help them to some degree. If just, it's just that two-week window or something that they were talking about. If we could reach out to D fifty-one and see if it's possible, if we use the gymnasium or something like that for voting. It it would just be, it just seems to me like they could use a little help on a certain couple of things, and I think that that would be another thing. It'd be nice if we could come up with a solution
Right.
um to take a little stress off their plate. But anyway, that, that was uh what was going on in their thing. Um, and then the, the other thing I wanted to talk about, and luckily I ran into Shannon earlier today, so I caught my answer, but just to bring it to the public forum, um Janine and I were very happily accosted by one of our favorite citizens that is very vocal about things when she doesn't like how they're being done and uh was very offended by the fact that there was cars and trailers parked at the school that we were just talking about. And um it apparently um I or my wife were the people that gave permission for this thing. So I don't know how that happened, but anyway, um it D fifty-one did actually give the permission for that to happen. So I just wanted that to be out there into the public sphere.
That was actually really smart.
And and I thought that it was, it was good and and a response to that is, yes, it was scary to watch them on that grass and we were worried about the grass, but it seems like it, it weathered it well. But also, I think overall for the city of Fruta, this weekend, that was the most I've seen people downtown during a Fat Tire Festival ever. And as a business owner, I very much appreciated the additional foot traffic that I've never got from Fat Tire, and I'm sure that plenty of the other businesses did. So it, it, it worked out fairly well and it kept a lot of people in town. There, I'm sure we'll notice in the sales tax, we'll notice in the lodging tax, we'll notice in the, the um, you know, the restaurants and and all the different things. I don't know how much we can encourage that in the, moving forward, but it worked well. And and I know that, you know, I just wanted to bring that up because I know there was a lot of people freaking out, like, why is that happening? And it was like, it's not ours, and they did give permission for that to happen, so. Anyway, um, other than that, I think that's all I got, yeah.
I did forget something. Um, it was, it was briefly touched on earlier, but this has just come up multiple, multiple, multiple meetings now, and we have sat here happily just being quiet. But I just want to, for clarification purposes, to make sure that we're all on, that, that it's clear that there is a reference about a um a petition that has been signed multiple, multiple times to mention to us that we're ignoring. And I have not seen that petition. I believe none of us, so can we say, like, can we make sure here?
Yep.
Yeah, like, none of us, nor city staff, I see.
Staff has not.
Heads, um, no, no one, no city counselor, no city staff have seen said petition. Thus, it is not being ignored and not paid attention to. We just have not.
I like that we were accused of ignoring something that we haven't been given.
I just wanted to add a clear, I just.
Yeah, that was interesting as well.
I just wanted to add it. I just wanted to clarify to make sure that I wasn't missing something. Um, and. Nor something we have not received. Yes, so I I just feel like that that is um rightfully needs to be on the public, right, yeah.
Anything else?
No. I did forget something and I can't believe that I forgot it because it was a massive, like stressful piece of my week. Yeah. Um, I competed in the Dancing with the Stars, well, competed. I performed. I performed um and represented the city of Fruta. That was part of why they asked me was I, as being a council member, and I'm very proud to report that I was the second highest um dollar earner. We earned almost seventy thousand dollars for, for the community food bank and ten thousand three hundred and eleven of those dollars came from um my people. So I want to thank all of you guys who contributed and supported and uplifted me um as I took that on because uh it was terrifying. And I'm glad it's behind me, but it was an incredibly successful event and um we're looking forward to next year. Yes, we, with the money we earned, we can feed uh two hundred and twenty-something thousand meals to our neighbors in need with one event. So that was really phenomenal. So thank you, guys, for your support.
Thank you. Without going to close, going out of order, uh.
Still has his.
I know, we're gonna go back to him, but um Mayor Elizabeth, I think, is signed off or signing off.
Yep.
So, great. So with that, we're now gonna go to our city managers' report.
This is uh way too much pressure, being the person in between everyone going home, so I will be uh very, very.
We need to do it this way from now on.
I'm usually pretty brief, I feel.
I'm usually pretty brief, I feel like, right? Yeah, yeah.
No.
The night is not that night, no, I'm only kidding. Only a few things. First off, do want to say congratulations to Amanda on being appointed to the City Council. Yeah, very excited to have you. I had the opportunity to work with Amanda back when I first served as a staff liaison on Livability Commission six years ago. And, yeah, I got to meet with Amanda yesterday for an hour and many more meetings to come, but yeah, we're excited to have the council full again. And, yeah, I thank all of you for all of your participation in council, because it can be a lot of work, for sure. But definitely appreciate it.
Yeah, that was.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Few other things, a lot of people have already mentioned this, but I did want to say congratulations to Dan Karas as well. Day two as Assistant City Manager, how's it been going?
Getting the hanging of it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've been told the best part about the job is deferring all planning questions to Henry.
Yeah.
He's tonight.
Yeah, after the presentation, everything goes to Henry for future reference, so. Appreciate it, thank you, Henry.
And I'm no longer on the traffic committee.
Oh.
That's, that's why you picked the job, Jimmy, that sealed it.
Yeah, no, we're very excited for Dan, as everyone knows, this was a very competitive recruitment. We received 50 applications from not just across Colorado, Arizona, Minnesota, Texas, all over the place. And this was, this was a tough decision, but Dan, we're super excited to have you. Done such great work over the last seven years, so looking forward to what you do in this new role. And with that, yeah, and with that, Henry has also been promoted to interim Planning Director, so congratulations. Yeah, yeah. So, all planning questions.
There you go.
We haven't, yeah, figured out structure yet, but as soon as we do, we'll definitely report it to the council as well. A few other quick items, next Friday, our communications and engagement team is hosting a social media for training for our local businesses at the F-Works Coffee Club. So if any local business is interested in learning about how we do our social media for the city of Fruta, but also Go Fruta, just kind of helpful tips and tricks on how to improve or change social media. We definitely recommend everyone go to that, that's in the F-Works conference room from 9:00 to 10:00 a.m. next Friday. And then that same group, AM and NCR, will be presenting to our Downtown Business Coalition hosted by the Chamber as well, so I think that'll be great. Community Survey has hit homes, we hope that everyone has received it. If not, your spouse may have thrown it away, but if he or she did, you can still complete it at. He or she, I haven't seen mine, so I'm suspicious. But I encourage everyone to participate, it, it's easy, about 10 to 15 minutes, it's frutassurvey.org.
It takes hours.
Uh-oh.
It's only if you have a discussion with your spouse, the answer should be.
There you go, okay.
You're a councilman and she's not, it'd take a little longer.
Yeah, yeah.
Did you extend the, the closing date on that?
Yeah, so there actually is no deadline, it does say, please submit 10 days after you receive it, but we'll probably be receiving submittals until the end of the month, and even after they trickle in, they'll probably use that as well. But yeah, no deadline with everything that was going on, so, yeah, encourage anyone, even separate spouses to take it if they're interested, and it can be taken online. Finally, two last things, a special workshop at 5:20, I did send an email to council reminding you of this, so we'll have a 5:30 p.m. special meeting on the 20th. That's to get a quick overview of metro districts with our Special Counsel Dalton Kelly. The city is in the process of receiving a request to approve a service plan for a metro district, so you'll most likely be hearing that in July. So we want to make sure we, council has enough information to feel comfortable in making decisions on that proposal, so.
Getting ahead of that.
Oh, of course, yeah.
Learn and absorb.
Yeah, it's a pretty, it's an interesting process, so yeah, service plan gets submitted. It has to be approved by council, and then they actually petition to Mesa County Court for an election that goes before the property owner, so it's a pretty long process, not too terribly long, but it'd probably be done by the end of the year, but they wanted to make sure they hit kind of all of their benchmarks. But even with providing this upfront training and then being able to review the actual service plan before it goes before council, I think that'll be very beneficial, and they'll still be able to meet all of their deadlines. So we have that 5:20 and then 6:17 to actually review, and then sometime in July, it will go before council. And already talked about this, we're hosting a lot of bike-to-work events next Friday, or a week from Friday, so we'll have the group ride first thing in the morning for breakfast and coffee with the mayor and I. Then we'll have a community engagement ride at noon, much more leisure than the co-to-it. So when I said race pace earlier, I was joking. It'll be a lot of fun, so yeah, I hope if anyone's interested, they can make it. That's it, I'm sorry it's so late, I will stop there.
Question about 5:28 in the CML district meeting?
Oh, yeah.
Know anything about that, or?
Yeah, so this is one that CML hosts in each district after the legislative session. So if you're interested in attending, just let us know, and we can get you registered for it. So usually, it provides the opportunity for the host community to provide an update, but also all of the other organizations provide an update as well, they're in attendance. But then the bulk of the time will be spent hearing from the CML staff and probably the Executive Director, Kevin Baumron, just a recap of what happened at the legislature and how some of those bills will impact municipalities in the next year. So we, I think Mike, Janine, Amy and I attended last year in May, and that was a great session. We anticipate this one will be pretty well-attended as well.
Where's the, where's it, that?
Oh, yeah, it's at the community center.
It is, at ours, right?
Yep, yep.
Yeah, I thought so.
It's, yeah, it's the 28th, yeah, yeah, yeah. Food and.
Is that a Friday?
Dinner and drinks will be provided, yeah.
So, yeah.
Yeah.
Was thinking, I'm thinking.
Yeah.
I'll be there.
Yeah, yeah, great. That's it, I appreciate it, thank you, yeah.
I just saw my, an email pop up, I, I'm, I'm going to participate in that Broadway Elementary Panel. I was able to see in the 1:30 to 3:30, I don't, I didn't know if any of the rest of you guys had responded to that, but going to.
What is it? I didn't, I missed it somehow.
Um, we were invited to, uh, the Broadway Elementary School fourth graders do the, this panel where they have to, well, they present to a panel, and then, like, you give feedback and kind of just engage with these kiddos. And then they also, another piece, they, they kind of invited us to two separate things, so that wherever you could fit it in. The other is the marketplace, like, I think all of the elementary schools, my kiddos did that, where they have to basically make something to sell, kind of gives them a taste of entrepreneurial. So I'm going to participate in the panel from 1:30 to 3:00, and then for a couple of other times. But I wasn't sure if anybody else, I didn't know if we needed to, like, post it or anything.
That's next week, right?
Yeah. Well, it's, it's Friday, it's this.
This Friday.
And next Tuesday, there was, oh, yeah, and Tuesday the 13th, that's right.
Next Saturday, I will be representing Fruta at the CMU graduation.
Oh, doing what?
Sitting in the audience and representing. There's a special section set aside.
Full robe?
I asked that question, I said, I'm really good at asking dumb questions, so here we go, and I just got the email saying, no. We do not wear our educational cap gown. I'm good with that, no, I'm good with that. All right, it's late, wrapping stuff up, anybody else got anything else before we adjourn? Going once, going twice, it's not, 10:19, thank you all, we are adjourned. Yeah, I went and looked, I still have mine from my MBA, and.